Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
May fourteenth, city council meeting to order. We're glad you are here to join us. We are going to begin as we always do, and that's by asking for God's presence in this room as well. So I'm gonna ask our mayor, Pro Tem, if he wouldn't mind leading us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Pray with me. Lord, we come to you now thanking you for this day, thanking you for all your grace and mercy that you bestow upon us. Lead us and guide us throughout this day as we try to do your will. Be with us in the deliberations that we have and the business we need to conduct for the city. Bless those in attendance, bless those watching and their families. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. If you would please stand and join me in a pledge of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business is approval of the minutes for April thirtieth meeting. We've got a motion to approve and a second. Are there any edits, any questions about the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We've got, um, we've got a proclamation. Uh, Councilor Toya Tucker is gonna present a mayoral proclamation to the, uh, to National Correctional Officers Week, and I know we've got quite a few of them here. Gives us a rare opportunity to thank them. Warden, bring them all up. Let them stand behind you. That's fine. That's all right.
Good morning. Good morning, Warden Walker and everybody. It's a great pleasure to be able to read this proclamation today for two reasons. One, this is where my uncle started in MCP, um, when he was working in the city. But two, because of the wonderful work that you all do, um, at MCP and definitely being in the district, um, in District Four, I appreciate all that you all do. So the proclamation reads, whereas American Jail Association Incorporated, AJA, is an organization dedicated to ensuring that those who work in our nation's jails and prisons in all jurisdictions are recognized as professionals in the public safety community. And whereas the job of a correctional officer entails being the first to respond to various, various emergencies in any correctional facility, including criminal activity, medical emergencies, mental health emergencies, fires, hostage situations, riots, disturbances, violent offenders, gang threats, contraband, and natural disasters. And whereas correctional officers experience similar physical and mental health impacts as law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel. And whereas numerous state and local jurisdictions do not consider correctional officers to be sworn members of the criminal justice profession, nor are they held in the same regard as law enforcement officers. And whereas numerous state and local jurisdictions fail to acknowledge correctional officers as first responders, thus limiting their access to grant funds, retirement funds, disabilities, and death benefits, as well as educational opportunities available to recognize first responders. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim May fifth through eleven, twenty twenty-four, as National Correctional Officers Week.
Good morning, Mayor, city manager, members of council. Um, it's a great honor for us to receive this proclamation. And, uh, Mayor, I promise we left enough people back at the facility to run it, so I didn't bring everybody. But, um, I have a staff behind me and beside me that, um, they work hard. And for us to be recognized today, um, it means a lot. Some of them worked last night, just got off at seven o'clock this morning. And I asked the staff to be here with me, and they showed up, um, as you see. We sent out somewhere between two and three hundred inmates a day throughout the city to work. You see them out, parks and rec, cutting grass, government center, um, all over. And, um, the staff are tasked with getting them out, getting them in. Our day starts sometime at two thirty in the morning, um, for you to see the product that we're putting out in the city. So, um, I just wanted to have them here to publicly recognize them and present the MCP team to everyone in the room and thank them publicly for all the work, the hard work that they do. And, um, they know I appreciate them. I'm here with them. I tell them all the time, I'm just their mouthpiece. They do all of the hard work. But, um, I just wanted to let them know, thank you publicly. I appreciate everybody at MCP. To my left, at the end of the month, after twenty-eight years, Deputy Warden King will be going into retirement. And, um, I also want to publicly thank him for the service that he has given MCP and to the city of Columbus. Also, to my right, Deputy Warden Security Thomas has been with the city many, many, many years. At MCP almost just as long. He's at the old facility and came over to the new facility. And, uh, for them accepting me and training me on some of the things that I needed to learn as far as city regulations, um, these two to my right and left, um, I couldn't thank them enough. So I wanted to recognize Deputy Warden Thomas as well. Lieutenant Harbuck. Come up here, Lieutenant. This is a longtime MCP employee and, um, okay. I was notified yesterday that he will be accepting a deputy warden position at Harris County.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations to Lieutenant Harbuck. And that's all I want to say. Mayor, unless you have any questions, sir.
Warden, thank you for bringing all of these incredible law enforcement officers. And that's what they are, law enforcement. What they, they also do some things that fly under the radar. I know over the last couple of years, as we've struggled to rebuild the numbers, both in the Sheriff's Department and in the Police Department, the responsibilities still continue. And your folks have stepped up and helped us by riding through parks and trying to make sure that there's nothing going on there that, uh, that would cause the folks that are there to enjoy it any harm. And y'all have also worked security at times. So, uh, so these men and women, they'll work a full shift, and then they'll step out there to help the citizens of this community maintain safety in their parks and in their neighborhoods. And we really can't thank them enough. In fact, we frankly don't thank you enough. The Warden, Deputy Wardens, um, it's hard to applaud for you leaving. I mean, so, so we wish you well, but we are sorry to see you go because there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience, and a lot of, a lot of good work that these individuals have provided. So if you would, can we get everybody's name? Let them come up one at a time, just say their name, let us, let us recognize them.
Sergeant Lynn, First Shift.
Sergeant Nickerson, First Shift.
Officer Askew, FTO.
First Shift.
Officer Anderson, First Shift.
Officer McElroy, First Shift.
Officer Angelique Hawkins, First Shift.
Officer Grant, First Shift.
Counselor Beecham.
Officer Agbear, Second Shift.
Cadet Player, Second Shift.
Officer Underwood, Split Shift.
Officer Crabbe, First Shift.
Officer Linderos, Split Shift.
Sir Commander Glatten, Split Shift.
Sergeant Tackett, Third Shift.
Sergeant Fleishman, Split Shift.
All right, is that everybody?
Officer Smith, FTO, First Shift.
Officer Sparks, First Shift.
And I'm Lieutenant Holland, First Shift.
Well, thank you again, and if you would, have we got everybody?
Well, y'all know me.
I'm Sherman.
Deputy Warden Thomas, Deputy Warden Security, how y'all doing?
Deputy Warden King, Admin Depp.
Y'all come around, let us shake your hand, thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Good luck. Thank you, Pete, sir. Thank y'all so much for what you do. Appreciate so much what y'all do. Thank you. Thank you, yes, ma'am. Good to see you. Thank y'all for what you do. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you so much. Thank y'all so much, Counselor. Y'all do a fantastic job. I appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Amen. Good to see you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank y'all, Pete, sir. Like we work. Appreciate it. Good job. Thank you for what y'all do. Thank y'all for indulging us and allowing us to get all of their names because they all work and do such a fantastic job, and we don't get an opportunity to thank them often enough. All right. All right, we were scheduled for a presentation on Police Department, but they've got some, uh, some of the, uh, the command staff out of town. We are, we are gonna start bringing a quarterly update from all the public safety entities. That way you'll hear from the sheriff and the fire chief, and you'll hear from the warden as well as the police chief. So, uh, we just were unable to get that put together today. So we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Do have a short business agenda. The first ordinance up for discussion is the first reading that would allow the Finance Director to transfer executions on property to the Tax Commissioner. It's Counselor Begley's proposal that's up for discussion.
All right. Counselor Begley?
I mean, we've...
Oh, I missed the motion because I had a bug in my ear. I apologize. Restate the motion, Sandra.
Move to table.
All right, there's a motion to table for a period of time, or is...
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. All right, there's a motion to table indefinitely. Is there a second? All right, motion, second. All in favor of indefinitely tabling the discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, by raising your right hand.
One, two, three.
All right, all those... All those against tabling, raise your right hand.
One, two, three.
All right, it is, uh, it is an inconclusive vote, so it'll continue.
Yeah, you can have discussion now.
All right. Counselor Begley?
Yeah, I mean, this has been on the agenda since February. I've sent out the material. I've asked for questions or concerns. I haven't heard any disadvantages of proposing this. Is there anyone from the crowd who would like to speak to it?
Chris, would you turn that microphone on, please? His podium. Just a moment. There we go. Now.
Good morning. I'm Reynolds Bickerstaff, three hundred Crestfield Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I am in support of this ordinance for, um, benefits to my clients, for benefits of the community. Prime example, uh, the four oh eight Twelfth Street Building downtown, the corner of Veterans and Twelfth Street next to Georgia Power across from Burger King. The four sixteen building is adjacent to it. It's been vacant for seven years now. Vagrants in and out. I've been trying to contact the owner of this property for seven years. And, um, you know, nothing can be done currently on the ordinance unless the building is not boarded up. So all an owner has to do is board up any access points to the property and then can pay the taxes indefinitely, and nothing gets done with this property ever. Thus reducing revenue for the city, creating, uh, really a threat to my property and anyone around it because of what it attracts. I'm not gonna go into an explanation of what vacant properties attract. We see signs of that in cities all over the country. But this is a prominent, uh, location. It's affecting the value of my property. And there's nothing that we can do about it except try to encourage the owner, who is totally unresponsive, to do anything about it. And there's examples of this all over the city, whether it's a house, a vacant property. The only recourse you have is if they don't pay the taxes and you pick it up at a tax sale, then if they do not redeem the property within the period of time that's stated by the state ordinance, then you can pick it up and do something. But I can't offer them enough money. Y'all can't offer them enough money to do anything with the property and it sits vacant, uh, indefinitely. This, to me, gives you an opportunity to have some teeth in improving the city, increasing the tax digest, and also, uh, creating new uses of the property that are just sitting vacant because someone just wants to have something and do nothing with it. And to me, that's not progress. And I wish this wouldn't be tabled indefinitely. I don't understand the reason why that is, uh, why there's not any discussion going on about it. So as a concerned citizen, property owner, taxpayer, I wish this would be a more open discussion about a solution because what you have in place now is not helping this city move forward with properties that are vacant and abandoned and could be used for other purposes going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickerstaff. Counselor Begley?
Yeah, I don't understand the lack of conversation around this. I mean, it's been emailed, no comments. And we walked through it last time. There were no disadvantages. I did hear the, well, maybe it's not needed because we could do it anyway. But we've been saying that now for three months, and nothing's changed. And so nothing's going to change unless us as a legislative body use, pass an ordinance, which is what we're structured to do. And so it's just the, it does not feel like a sincere conversation, and we're just unwilling to even talk about it.
Counselor Garrett?
If this wasn't needed, then we, uh, I wouldn't go throughout my district, uh, like the Bellwood area, where my constituents are trying to revitalize that neighborhood. And there are brand-new, nice houses that sit right next to vacant houses that slum lords let sit vacant. Sit there. Nothing is done about it, and nothing has changed. It's been that way since I was elected. It's been that way, and we've had a lot of people who have bought properties from out-of-town landlords in like the Bibb City area, and we're starting to have more revitalization in the North Highland area. But I have areas of my district that, you know, Mercy Med or someone will go in, they will do a lot of work to make something nice, Habitat for Humanity, or Neighbor Works will go in and put up brand-new houses. And we still have these blighted properties that sit there, and they're vacant. They're used for drug activity, or they just look terrible. And they decrease the property values for my constituents who are homeowners or who, uh, you know, wanna rent a property and keep it up nice. And, uh, if this, uh, if this weren't an issue that we already had the power, it would have been used. And this ordinance will at least force that change and force a change for progress. And, um, I'm the building that's behind where, uh, Mr. Bickerstaff's talking about. And my employees are constantly worried about people coming up to them and asking for money or harassing them. And it's because that property sits there vacant, and it's been that way. And it's gone from one owner to another, and we haven't been able to do anything about it.
Counselor Tucker?
I'm gonna be very brief because I know we got a budget, um, session today. My one concern is the language and the possibility to harm heirs' property, especially in the black community. Um, a lot of times you have multiple family members who are trying to actually get the legal things taken care of. It's just a lot more, and then we set ourselves up for gentrification. And if we wanna do commercial, yes, but it's ways to address these properties based on what the Tax Commissioner presented. So I would like to see us just go through what the Tax Commissioner said and at least work with code enforcement to push it, um, and create the, get the properties, you know, taken care of. But even with us as a council body, um, addressing blight, blight in the community, when we tear it down, we still have to put some type, like additional monies to keep the properties maintained. Meaning, some of the people don't cut the grass. Um, I know we, we actually put, uh, put that in the budget for the grass if we need to send somebody, code enforcement out. But having a plan once we do take the houses down. But I'm just really concerned with how it will impact for heir properties. Um, and this for everybody, but especially, I will say especially in, um, the black communities, it can be a lot more challenging.
Mayor Pro Tem, Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Real brief, just, I agree with Counselor Garrett. And just wanted to say, as, as a city grows, it's, it's, uh, the duty is upon us to continue to change ordinances, to make it more workable for the businesses to do business. We need to clean up the blight. We need to continue to give the tools to those that work in the community to do that. Uh, and I support the change. I, I think it's very minimal. Uh, it doesn't impact that greatly on anything we're already doing, but it does open a door for us to clean up the blight. Uh, let's, let's move forward with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Begley?
Just to address Counselor Tucker's comments, um, so when the Tax Commissioner spoke, she was specifically referring to a blight tax, which is not what's, we're talking about today. She said that she didn't feel like this was needed because she can already do it, and she, and she's right. She does per state law have the responsibility. But this was focused on the city ordinance and the city administration who recommended this. And so no one is losing any rights. All the heirs retain the exact same rights they have today. They would not do anything to affect their rights. I do think this specifically helps poorer communities because a lot of those, um, they do have blight. And you can see the, when you do the map, a lot of these properties with liens, but current on their taxes are in the poorer communities. And those are the communities where you've got this blighted house, and you've got neighbors across the street beside them who now have, whether it's concern about homeless people in there, drug use, um, even just snakes or rats in the overgrown house. Those neighbors have to deal with this. And so this affects all of those neighbors and then helps us address that blight so those neighbors can get a decent house next to them, and at the same time does not reduce any property rights.
All right. Thank you, sir. One thing I will add, and I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced this is the answer, but I think certainly it could be part of the answer. It needs to be discussed. One of the challenges we face with blighted property is we send our people out there to take care of it. And then a couple weeks to months later, we're, they're asking, we're asking them to snap to attention out here. Why haven't they done it? Well, they have, but now it's time to go out there and try to do it again. So we're running from one to another in some instances that, that, um, there might be a better way to get this thing expedited and get that thing cleaned up permanently, so. All right, that's all the comments?
All right, we'll bring that back then in two weeks for a vote. The next item is the proposal for a civic center and ice rink authority sponsored by Counselor Begley. It's similar to the Trade Center structure.
Could we, could, and I hate to do this, but I, I know we need to do the first readings as early as possible. We've got some students from Reese Road that are in school today, but they're here to give a short presentation. And, uh, and I'm gonna ask this council to pause where we are and to bring them up and let them do the presentation. Not only because they're incredible kids and it's a fantastic presentation, but we need them to get back to school. So I'm gonna call up, this is on the city manager's agenda. I'm gonna call up the folks from Reese Road. The city manager? Public agenda? Okay, well, let's, let's still pull them up. If y'all wanna come on up, let's, because sometimes it can take a while to get to, to them.
And Mayor, their principal, um, Katrina Long, uh, is here representing Reese Road Leadership Academy.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, for bringing us on up. I know our students were excited to remain. Yes, we have a lot going on at Reese Road, and we thank you for allowing us to come and give an update of our two-year project that we've been working on with Reese Road. So I'll let our students begin.
Right.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jacob Alvedilla, and I am a fourth grade magnet student at Reese Road Leadership Academy. Today, we are here to talk about the PBL, the Project-Based Learning Growth of Carbon Park from last year to this year.
Hello, my name is Scarlett Johnson, and I'm a fifth grade magnet student at Reese Road Leadership Academy. Our overarching project-based learning initiative was how can Reese Road help the community through revitalizing Carbon Park? Each grade has its own STEAM focus. STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. The kindergartners' focus was what do the animals need to survive? The first graders' focus was how does the weather affect fish revival? The second grade focus was how do insects affect the park? Third grade focus was how can we revitalize and maintain the lake? The fourth grade focus was how can a healthy ecosystem affect the living organisms in the park? The fifth grade focus was how do we know what we catch is safe to eat? We do, we developed our projects and activities using the design process from STEAM. We were able to ask, imagine, plan, create, improve, and present. Participation in this project has given me a sense of pride and ownership in my community. We at Reach Road have been given the tools to make and create change in Columbus.
Good morning. I'm Zoe Hall, a fifth grade magnet leader at Reach Road Leadership Academy. By having Carver Park as an extension of our school, it allowed us to apply what we were learning in class to real world examples. When I was in the fourth grade, we were introduced to a plan to revitalize Carver Park and to, to make it a fun, safe environment for families. For the past two years, our area of concern was the lake. Our fourth grade project-based learning question was how can a healthy ecosystem affect the living organism? This question was a bridge to our fifth grade PBL question. Is it safe to eat what you catch? Thus leading to testing the water and identifying what types of fish were in the lake. This is just one demonstration of how our PBL goals brought our educational standards to life in a real way.
Hello. My name is Aleah Elside and I'm a magnet student from Reach Road Leadership Academy. I want to highlight two of the many benefits we've experienced through our partnership with Carver Park. Family Night in the Park and Family Night in the Park Fishing Rodeo. This was a precious opportunity that many students cherish. Bringing families together at Reach Road is something students will never forget. Students at Reach Road have brought these experiences to school and it has improved their learning of community and connection. Thank you for the extra effort that you've put into ensuring our safety and your dedication in helping our, our students and families thrive. We appreciate everything you've done and we hope that we can experience this again. Through conversation with adults, they say this park means far more than just having fun. My peers say this is, this is an experience they will never forget.
Good morning. I'm Erica Banks, a fifth grade magnet student at Reach Road Leadership Academy. The 2023 Family Night in the Park, the 2024 Fishing Rodeo, and being able to use Carver Park as an outdoor classroom has brought much joy to the parents, students, and teachers. We had no idea when this project started what type of impact it would have on everyone involved. As kids, we just wanted to be able to use the park, but what we gained is so much more. Imagine being a nine-year-old presenting in front of the city council. Have any of you ever done that? We formed partnerships with several local businesses and departments. Thank you to Reverend Bell and the Edge Church, the Food Mill, the Columbus Police Department, SDR National Park, Parks and Recreation, Georgia Fish and Wildlife, and everyone who has supported Reach Road in this endeavor. This project has opened our minds to many career opportunities available to us. In conclusion, we have another ask. We would like to extend our PBL to other parks in our local area. We also ask that Reach Road Leadership Academy be involved in future plans, activities, and expansions involving Carver Park. I believe we have proven that we are up for the task. Thank you.
So this is a representation of the great happening at Reach Road. And we want to thank you so much for your partnership and for giving us this extremely special opportunity for our students. Because no one has been able to do what our students have been able to do at Carver Park. We've had two culminating events for our students because each year it is student-led and they decide what it is that we focus on. And it has stretched our faculty and staff because we've had to step outside of the box to keep up with our road runners. And if you know me, I'm not an outdoors type of person. But I've had to jump in with both feet because our students identify the need and the want to get into Carver Park and do these activities. So we are so grateful for the opportunity. We pray that you consider our ask to continue these endeavors. And we hope that you see how it ties into our Georgia standards for our students with our science, technology, engineering, arts, and math.
Well, that was an amazing presentation. Counselor, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that these kids really do want to go back to school, but it is the last week of school, right? And I would suggest that perhaps they come up and stand in front of our city seal with the mayor and have your picture taken.
And so, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
You know, I really want to thank Katrina Long and, and these students for their vision. And I want them to know that we, we've got some other things going on that will be happening in Carver Park. And one thing always leads to another. But Carver Park was part of our special purpose local option sales tax. And we've got $5.7 million that will be spent at Carver Park. And I know they're listening while we're talking. Yeah, right, right. Because they can multitask. But I did want to say to them, in case they don't know, that there's some great things coming to Carver Park, like a list of things could include dredging the lake, creating new walking trails, and renovating existing trails. New pavilions, new playground, a splash pad, and the possibility of a basketball court, as well as tennis pickleball court. Improving the field in the back of the park, new restrooms, changes to the entrance and roadway throughout the park to make it safer for people to run, walk in the park. And you may know that the members of Delta Sigma Theta even proposed that the park be named in honor of former Mayor Potem and District Four Representative Evelyn Turner-Pew. And so beautification, other things, activities coming to the park. So we're gonna partner with you to make sure all of these things happen.
I was just gonna say how exciting, if you've listened this morning to what the students have said in the presentations they gave, how exciting to live here in a community with students like this. To know what they are learning in the parks and what that will take them to in the future. So just super excited to be involved. This is a fabulous school, students, faculty. Everybody's excellent to work with and just can't say enough. And when you guys leave, I have a small token to say thank you to the students who came this morning.
I want them to say we're watching CCG TV. We are on CCG TV. On three, on three. One, two, three.
Now, those are the kind of stories need to be in our media while we're looking at, at what kind of amazing things are being done by our young people. Yeah, I've had a chance to visit Reach Road on a number of occasions. Every one of the children in that school is exemplary, just, just like, just like those folks here today. All right. Ready? Yes, sir.
Back to the business list. We've, item two is a proposed civic center and ice rink authority patterned after the Trade Center, but it's up for discussion.
Make a motion to delay.
There's a, there's a motion and a second to delay. Is there any discussion to that motion? All right. All in favor of, is there a time certain or? Delay indefinitely. There's some discussion. Counselor Begley?
I, I do understand this is gonna be delayed. I just have two requests. One, I know there's a more larger ordinance coming. I just hope that, if that does look too complicated, especially as many changes are going on in that area, council will have this option on the shelf if they want to look at that option as well. Also, if you're spending more time researching it, I'd also suggest looking at a third-party management company. Some of the advantages, I know that scares a lot of people. One of the advantages of a third-party management is that if they manage 40 arenas, they've already got several different acts booked. And that allows them to really, instead of them trying to find acts to come to Columbus, they're really just.
Mr. Mayor, this is not germane to the motion. The motion is.
Well, the council, I'll, I'll let the counselor speak.
Yeah. So I understand we're delaying it because we want to research it further. I'm suggesting one option to research as well as a third party, because they do have access to a lot of arenas and they can actually bring more acts to Columbus. And it would also help have a clear understanding of our financial impact. So I did want to present this as an option. I think it's the best option. But if council wants to delay it to research further, understood. They've got this option on the shelf if they wish to have it again in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Begley. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the indefinite delay, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. It is delayed indefinitely.
All right. And item three on our list, Mayor, is the adoption of an ordinance. This is of roadways for speed detection devices, radar on DOT state routes and non-DOT city streets. It's just first reading. We do it every three or so years. Engineers here, if there are any questions around the table?
Don't see any.
You want to explain it just briefly, what they're asking for, Ms. Newman?
Sure. We're required by law to pass this ordinance in order, this is part of the permitting for our law enforcement to use radar devices throughout the community. It also establishes school zones. This year, it took us a while because we wanted to clean it up and we worked with the school districts on revising some of those times. We had, in some cases, an exceptionally long time for school zones. And within 30 minutes, generally, most schools have emptied out and all the students are gone. So that tends to lead people to not obey the law if they don't see school buses or cars parked at the school, but yet you're still in the flashing light school zone. So we did update that, but we did work with the school district and with the police department on getting this ordinance in place and cleaned up.
All right.
Okay. We'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote. Thank you, Ms. Newman.
Thank you.
Then, Mayor, the only other request we have is for an executive session on litigation and real estate acquisition and disposal. That's all we have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move to the public agenda. Reminder, the public agenda, you'll have five minutes. If you can't complete your comments in five minutes, I apologize in advance for cutting you off, but you will have an opportunity to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for three additional minutes to try to wrap up your thoughts. I'll try to, I'll try to give you a signal when you've got about a minute left, just so you'll know to be wrapping up. First on the public agenda is Ms. LaKaren Rickman, representing New Horizons Behavioral Health regarding the results from the recent Community Mental Health Needs Assessment.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing us a little bit of time to talk with you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. My name is LaKaren Rickman. I am a licensed clinical psychologist. I joined New Horizons in January of this year to help support the organization in transitioning to a certified community behavior health center, shortened for CCBHC. One of the goals of CCBHC is that it's a national movement to address the mental health crisis in the U.S. And particularly following the COVID pandemic, we have seen severe needs in terms of mental health. Part of becoming certified as a community mental health clinic is to do a needs assessment. And so what you're receiving right now is the results of our needs assessment. New Horizons actually serves eight counties, including Columbus and Muskogee County. And some of the things that we learned about our service area, particularly specific to Columbus, Columbus fares better than the state of Georgia and nationally when it comes to having enough behavior health providers. We actually have more behavior health providers per capita than the state and nationally. However, when it comes to serving individuals who have limited financial means or are uninsured, we fare worse. And that's New Horizons' task is to, we are tasked with supporting and providing care. We're the, we're the safety net provider for the community. So for individuals who are uninsured, Medicaid, Medicare, that is our mission to serve those. The whole purpose of CCBHC is to make sure that anyone who has a behavior health needs, that they can get the care that they need. CCBHC is about increasing access. So one of the things that we had to determine was what is the unmet need? And that's based on looking at prevalence rates and how much behavioral health. Behavioral health includes mental illness and substance use disorders. Looking at the prevalence of it in our community and looking at how many people, we estimate how many people need help based on prevalence rates. If you'll see the one handout that I gave you, because I know that that needs assessment will probably go somewhere in a drawer and there's a lot of information in there. But that one leaf handout has a pie chart on it that shows you how we're doing in Muskogee County. But New Horizons meets about 62% of the entire unmet need of those who need healthcare, behavioral healthcare needs in Muskogee County. That's pretty good compared to our overall service area and compared to the state. But that also means that there's opportunity for growth. That means that there are people out there who need help, who are not receiving help. So some of the things that we came up with and prioritized based on our needs assessment, we have three objectives over the next three years. One is workforce development. We are in what's called a HIPSA. That's a healthcare provider service area shortage. We have a shortage of mental health providers in our area. So looking at providing workforce development, starting our own training program so we can grow our own providers to meet that need is gonna be one of the things that we're gonna be working on over the next three years. We're also looking at expanding services. And that includes providing services in non-traditional settings, not just looking for people to come to us, but going out into our community and providing services in areas that we may not have provided them yet. And then, I'm almost there. I only have one left. And then the third priority for us is stigma reduction. Being someone from the South, being raised in the South, I realize that, and being, and being educated in the Midwest, that we do still have a huge issue with stigma around mental illness and substance use in the South. And so we want to put a tremendous amount of energy into educating our community about behavior health needs, as well as not just what are they, what are symptoms, but once I know that I have a problem, where can I get help? And so that's our whole goal and we look to partner with our community to do that here in Columbus.
Fantastic.
All right. I just wanted to jump in here because y'all were kind enough to add a mental health proclamation to the agenda. But our staff, who are really the rock stars and who should accept that, are right here. So I just want to give them a quick shout out there from our Reach program.
If you, if you can stay around, we've got about four other people on the public agenda. We'll call you up right after that and present that proclamation.
No rush. But thank you to Dr. Rickman. And it's a great month, May Mental Health Awareness Month, to share these unmet needs and reduce that stigma in our community.
Listen, New Horizons has such an incredible job in this, and we've said it before, but I think if there are a few positives that came out of the COVID darkness, one of them was that people are paying more attention to mental health. And they're a little bit more willing and, and looking for, for ways to, to seek assistance. So New Horizons does a terrific job. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I wanted to thank you all for coming up and presenting. This is extremely important information. Mental health is wealth. I'm up here thinking about my dear friend in the audience, Mr. Willie Belfield. I'm up here thinking about my dear friend in the audience, Mr. Willie Belfield, who reached out to me. And every time I see him, when I go to the VA or anywhere, he tells me that I've been hit with death, you know, in the family, two times in less than 11 months, and I need to focus on my mental health. I actually got my psychology degree when I got out of the Air Force because I didn't realize how important mental health was, until you get out and you kind of like stop having that high ops, you know, tempo where you're going, 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 and then you crash. So I learned an important lesson. One of the things that I did want to mention, because I like your priorities, where you're saying enhance and expand the NHBH levels of care access and scope of services in the community, I like the whole three, all of them. But eventually soon, our Chief Sal Scarper, he has, we were saying, I think dock in a box type concept. But he is looking at, and it's not just him, it's all public safety, doing a coalition, but having this somewhat dock in a box where they're setting up a mobile triage where, right?
I'm smiling because we just got a mobile unit.
See? And it's something... Yeah, so we've been talking about that at the national level. I serve on human services and education, and we talk about the importance. And I know Senator Ossoff has talked about it and doing certain things. But we've talked about it on the national, of course, the state and the regional level. But for individuals like Chief Scarper, that is mentioning this along with our Chief Mathis and Sheriff and also Warden, Warden, Herbert Walker, just them being this enhancing and expanding in us as a community slash public-private working together. I think we're going to see some really great things in the future because we know, like you said, that people aren't coming to you, but guess what? They're going to the jail. So a lot of people within our community are not getting the services that they need through you because they're not self-seeking. They're getting arrested and getting the care that they need within our prison facility and prison and jails. So I'm just excited, especially... Oh yeah, can we see a triage unit? I was, Counselor Crap, so you all have it or you just ordered it?
The mobile unit?
Yeah, your mobile.
The mobile unit, more to it, is a big bus where we can go out and park and take services to the community.
Yes, ma'am. We, we had an opportunity from the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities to apply for funding from them to do some COVID mitigation and rapid testing in the community. And our approach was to purchase a mobile unit. The mobile unit has been purchased, it's in our parking lot. We are now in the process of getting the decals and the branding on the bus. And we are hoping to roll it out at our first event on June 27th for National HIV Testing Day. So initially, we're going to be doing COVID rapid testing, HIV and Hep C rapid testing on the mobile unit. But once our contract obligation on the rapid testing is over, we're going to use it for mobile triage, access for behavioral health assessments, to go to our eight county service areas. We have a lot of locations here in Muskogee County, but it's our rural counties that really need that access to care. And you'll see that in the Community Mental Health Needs Assessment.
Well, one, I know some of the councillors want to actually come and do a tour of it. But two, I, and you, I already know that me and Counselor Barnes work with River Valley Regional Commission. Please come to RVRC meeting when we're in Buena Vista. I think that'd be great.
Chloe is going to arrange for a ribbon-cutting event when the decals and everything are placed on the, the mobile unit. And we will be sure to include invitations to the city council representatives. And just wanted to take this opportunity, really, Ms. Pops Barnes, he was a big supporter of health needs for the community, as well as mental health needs. And we really feel his loss there at New Horizons, just as we know y'all on council do too.
Well, thank you very much. All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned that, you're exactly right, Counselor Barnes. Our beloved Counselor Barnes is a great advocate for mental health. And one of his last projects, Counselor Tucker and Counselor Barnes were working on this together. I was just to tag along with the group, but certainly there was a great concern with our community. Matter of fact, he coined the name Community Healthcare Fund. We changed it from the Inigent Healthcare because he said, you know, we need to get away from that name, that term, because it's just, when you're in that position, it, it's, nobody likes to be called that. So it went to underserved and the Community Healthcare Fund, that's one of the reasons. But he, he worked on, he was part, and Counselor Tucker just touched on it, part of a, what I'm excited about, what she does, talked about with public safety. It was a dream, it was a desire, it was a vision that he had. I'm hoping that council, that we're going to talk more about it when we start talking about the Community Healthcare Fund and, and working together on that. But there's a collaborative effort going right now that's going to address some of those mental healthcare needs in our community. And certainly, Pops was at the forefront in that, and he would be proud. I'm pleased to hear some of the things that's happening with public safety. We're, and not only New Horizons, but being able to take those needs to those who are out in our community, and being able to take a lot of the pressure off of our services and go and provide that direct need to these people. And I think that's, it's, it's going to be worthwhile, and I'm excited about it. And certainly, I know New Horizons is going to be a part of it. Our first-tier healthcare agencies, like our hospitals and others, they're part of it, public safety. And I'm excited to see how, hopefully, how all this comes together and everybody working together. I think we can address a lot of needs in our, our community. So thank you for coming and recognizing this month. And it's not just this month, it's, this is full-time. And it's become, people don't realize the crisis that it's become across the board. You know, just pick a topic, pick a, an area where people are struggling. It's, it, it's becoming a crisis, and we have to address it. So I thank you all for what you're doing on the front line.
Thank you, thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Like I said, in just probably about 25, 30 minutes, we'll be able to get you back up. Yeah. All right, next is Ms. Claire Thomas, representing animal advocacy regarding the veterinary vaccine protocols and practices and microchips.
Am I ready?
Yes, ma'am, you have, you start with your name and, and address, or just the state of residence?
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilors, City Manager. My name is Claire Thomas, and I'm from Columbus, Georgia, lifetime resident. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this morning, again, regarding Columbus Animal Care and Control Center's veterinarian protocols and procedures. On 2/27, I spoke to you about CAC's rabies protocols regarding Dr. Hall and CAC breaking state law by having staff administer rabies vaccines, possibly forging Dr. Hall's signature on the certificates of rabies or having them pre-sign them. And I remind you that Dr. Hall stated during a December meeting, as of the mid-two, end of mid-December, I have personally given all vaccines at CAC. On 3/21, at the mayor's Q and A event, the CAC Division Manager, Ms. Kneeda Hardnett-Johnson, stated, so under the leadership of our veterinarian, all animals are vaccinated by the veterinarian when it comes in. Keep in mind, all animals are vaccinated on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So with that being the case, if an animal comes in on a Monday night, they may not be vaccinated until Wednesday, when our veterinarian is in the office. Well, guess what? They're still breaking the state law. In your handout, you can see multiple examples from CAC's very own website using their new chosen amazing software from around March 26, reflecting that those statements are not factual. Sweet OJ was killed on 4/14. He received his rabies vaccine on 3/21, 10 days after being impounded. You can see in your handout that according to Dr. Hall's March invoice and CAC sign-in, sign-out sheet, Dr. Hall was not at CAC on 3/21. There was only one instance where Dr. Hall administered a vaccine other than rabies. All other vaccines were administered by CAC staff members. Seven dogs impounded nine to 16 days with no rabies vaccine documented. One dog's rabies vaccine administered by staff. Seven dogs with no rabies vaccine until impounded five or more days. One was not until 17 days later. One dog was impounded on 3/1, whose rabies vaccine is listed as 2/28, two days before impoundment. How does that happen? I don't know. Five, five dogs with rabies administered by, is blank. For DAP, which includes parvo, and remember, this is parvo season, according to CAC leadership, there were nine dogs with no DAP vaccine documented. Six dogs impounded five days or more before getting DAP. One was not vaccinated until 15 days after impoundment. And you wonder why we have parvo breakouts. CAC's leadership has since removed the ability from the software, the new website for the public to see vaccination records of impounded dogs. If someone is not going to monitor the laws being followed, then we are calling for this to be reinstated because transparency is needed to ensure that vaccine protocols and laws are being followed. You also see an email from PAWS to Ms. Hardnett-Johnson at the end of February. Due to increased cases of parvo at CAC, PAWS recently had to start only pulling double vaccinated animals. However, after Ms. Hardnett-Johnson's March 21st statement, PAWS has had to rethink their process again. They simply cannot risk bringing unvaccinated animals exposed to diseases into their facility. We've recently learned more issues at CAC about with scanning animals for microchips. Just two examples. A rescue dog's paperwork stated microchipped at CAC. However, the rescue's vet could not locate the chip with two different scanners, nor the rescue's personal vet, I mean, personal scanner. A dog had been at CAC for six days when a volunteer witnessed another volunteer who was walking the dog and say excitedly, did the owner's name and phone number and address were on the dog's collar around its neck. A volunteer called the phone number, and the owner was overjoyed that he was found when he picked his dog up. He commented that it was chipped. However, CAC had no dated on the intake that he was not. A volunteer scanned it, sure enough, owner's information validated. The public is never informed of the urgent care needs after repeated requests to do so. This poor dog in these next photos was brought in last night, impounded after being hit by a car, unable to move his legs. Intestines appear to be protruding from his penal area. No vet access, no emergency treatment, no notification to the public.
Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up. You're welcome, you're welcome to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda.
I had 10 seconds left.
I think it just, the tone just went off. I'll give you 10 more seconds, go ahead.
These animals aren't suffering because it's inevitable, they're being denied help from the management. The new amazing software has donation option to be activated, why isn't it activated?
All right, that's 12 seconds.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around and come back after the clerk's. Okay, well, thank you. All right. Next, Ms. Teresa Elamine, regarding East Winton neighborhood blight and speeding. Ms. Hugley, did you?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, council, Mr. Mayor. First, a shout out to Public Works and Engineering. Oh, that 10 minutes looked good. The city really looks great. As I drove into the parking lot, all the handicapped signage looks brand new. The city looks great. East Winton, I'm told, is a historic black neighborhood where many citizens of African descent owned homes. I'm living my best life in a house that was built in 1945. So next year, we'll celebrate the 80th birthday of the house I live in. It's owned by an investor who lives in the Dunn-Woody area. He owns quite a few properties in Columbus. He owns another house in my block on East Winton. My block is a block between Briarwood and Lawyer's Lane, Shaw Street. I don't mind telling, Shaw Street is an important street. Briarwood, Lawyer's Lane, that block. The residents, mostly renters from what I can tell, take real care with their property. And I'm competing. I hired the best yard man, the best handyman, and my yard is going to be looking as good as my neighbors'. But when you go across Lawyer's Lane and you go across Briarwood, you see the kind of blight that makes you shame, makes you shame. And then, did you all receive my email about the Juneteenth? On June 18th, big party in my beautiful front yard. Juneteenth and the 25th anniversary of the Southern Anti-Racism Network. You're all invited. There will be ticket sales. And Mr. Mayor, I will put in a request for a proclamation because I want you there, if you can, 6:00 PM, delivering the proclamation. I have reached out to the representative for District 3 to no avail, to no avail. He does not return phone calls. So I'm coming before you all. I understand that on the speeding issue, if I am requesting speed bumps, I have to talk to engineering. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I will reach out because school buses and that catch-a-cab is a real menace. Catch-a-cab is a menace. I've almost been hit by them twice trying to back into my driveway. They are a menace. And so what I would like to do is stop that speeding. Shaw Street is being used as some kind of pass-through. And the school buses, I never go out before nine because between 7:30 and 8:30, even the school buses are flying through. So I'm speaking at the school board meeting on Monday, the 20th, to tell them they need to slow those school buses down, it's dangerous. So that's what I'm talking about today. And I see I got a whole minute left. So I don't have any more to say. I will reach out to engineering about the speeding, and I will get up with you, Mr. Mayor, about the proclamation. Because I want you there. It's going to be nice tents, and it's going to be fancy kind of sort of. But it's our 25th anniversary, and you know, you only have that once. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing you sooner than June 18th. But definitely on June 18th, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, next is Ms. Sue Goldman, representing Columbus Regional Tennis Association, regarding the tennis courts at Benning Park and Frank Chester Recreation Center. Welcome.
I'm going to read so I can clip through this. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Sue Goldman. I'm the current president for the Columbus Regional Tennis Association, QUOTA. With me today is our Executive Director, Judy Pierce, and our Outreach Coordinator, Edna Foster. I will get right to the point, we are seeking an... I will get right to the point. We are seeking an MOU. An MOU allowing the USTA Foundation to renovate four tennis courts at Frank Chester Recreation Center. The MOU must include the understanding that the existing courts will continue to be used for tennis for at least three years. Not just for USTA programs or QUOTA programs, but tennis for the community. There's no cost to the city. QUOTA applied for and received a grant from the USTA Foundation. There's no expansion requested, just renovation of the existing tennis court. Frank Chester is home to our NJTL, National Junior Tennis and Learning Program. We call ours Tennis Works. Tennis Works is an after-school tennis and academic enrichment program for children ages four through eighteen who qualify for free and reduced lunch. There is no fee for this program. This program follows the example set by Arthur Ashe to promote education, good character, and healthy lifestyles by one, reaching out to those who may not otherwise have the opportunity to play tennis; two, instilling in youngsters the values of leadership and academic excellence; three, giving kids, regardless of income, race, or gender, the opportunity to develop their tennis skills so they can derive a lifetime of enjoyment from the sport. Our program has been in existence for twenty-three years. At the moment, our NJTL has nine-hundred-and-eighty-two participants, serving two-hundred-and-twenty-nine at Frank Chester on four courts. Our numbers continue to grow. And in February, our Tennis Works program received the USTA Georgia NJTL of the Year. I'm gonna turn it over to Edna Foster.
Thank you, Sue. On behalf of the children of South Columbus, I come before you to say that most have received free tennis rackets, free clothing, and also a place to go to be able to participate in tennis and then do some academic enhancement, fun academic enhancement, without knowing that they're really learning. And so therefore, the tennis courts, we applied for the grant, was not expecting to get it because the, this is a national grant where they were only giving out three or four or something, but we slipped ours in. They have already given us the money, just waited to hear from us that we have a MOU to be able to say, yes, we can use it for the purpose of tennis for the three years. Now, we have the children that walk over from the mixed housing unit that come, bring their tennis rackets, bring their tennis balls that we provide for them, some in their tennis clothing, to say, yes, this is a safe environment for us to be. And then also during the summer, she mentioned we're after-school program, but during the summer, we offer summer camps for four days where we have the children during the time where the parents are at work and that we can be offering them a safe place to be. And then also lunch for those that would not normally get lunch. Now, last year, we had about twenty-eight to thirty children that were participating in the summer camp program on a regular basis. When you know that you have something good, you know it because they keep coming back. And our children in South Columbus at Frank Chester keep coming back. So we're asking you to give us the MOU so that we can do this. We partnered with Girls Inc. and the other nonprofits to provide the tennis component that the children wouldn't necessarily have if we were not doing this. So that's all we're asking. Are there any questions?
Counselor Kogle?
Yeah, this is, I know Counselor Huff is not here, but our districts kind of border right along Victory Drive there. So and a lot of my residents in, in South Columbus utilize Frank Chester quite a bit. And so this is, I think, a really good opportunity and really exciting for South Columbus for that revitalization of Frank Chester. I know that, and I know Counselor Huff's aware of it as well. But there is a, also a, an initiative to revitalize some other of the, the courts for street hockey, multi-use, so street hockey, volleyball, basketball, and to keep the tennis option as well. So I think that this partnership and this, this potential for an MOU could have a really profound impact on revitalizing Frank Chester Recreation and giving a lot of those kids something to do rather than being inside. I know that being inside on the basketball courts, I know that the recreation director out there is inundated by kids and it is packed and overflowing. So any help that she can get is gonna be really great for that community. So, thank you.
And I'm proud to say that we're getting some basketball players coming out swinging the tennis racket.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if there had been a, a request for an MOU. This sounds to me like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think the only thing we need to do is let the city attorney's office look at it and bless it. And that can be done pretty quickly. I think the city manager probably has a good path to set us off.
Yes, sir. We'll have Parks and Rec work with them to draft the MOU and then give it to the city attorney. But we're excited and would love to do an MOU with what they've presented.
Yeah, I want to thank.
And Holly Browder is here and I know she'll get with them and we can, we can work up an MOU. We've done them before and we'll get that done.
QUOTA, thank you. Y'all do such a great job of continuing to expand the opportunities to tennis for all the citizens of Columbus, and that is important. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Before they leave, I gotta take this opportunity. I just wanna, I wanna thank y'all. You're looking at some of the hardest-working ladies that I, I know of. And, you know, we're the envy of the state. I just got back from a tournament in Rome, played up there, and everybody talks about Columbus, Georgia. They really love coming here to, to play and we've got so many players. I play. I love it because of you guys, your organization, the collaboration between our Parks and Recs, and we have a tremendous facility. And I'm just gonna take this opportunity. I get beat up all the time out there. It's not really my district. Actually, it's, it's Counselor Barnes' district. But, and it's true, we are, we're getting kind of left behind by everybody else trying to figure out, you know, a better mousetrap. And they, and they are. And, and people like me, we're getting older and we can't see at night. I hope we can, you know what I'm about to say. I hope we can really expedite the Splotz funds and work on LED lighting. The lights that are out there are so archaic. They use up a tremendous amount of energy. And just the people like me who enjoy playing, it's hard to play at night if the lights are, you know what I'm talking about, is not good. And, you know, and when I do go to these tournaments, that's really the only negative thing they say is we just can't see at your place. I wish the lights were like this. And, and it's true. I mean, people are really, across the state, have already made those changes. So I hope, I think there's a, an initiative, I guess, in the works, but I hope we can expedite that, Mr. City Manager, and maybe make that happen or where we can get that lighting stopped. Because I'm tired of getting beat up all the time. And I just, you know, when I go out there, I'm constantly being reminded about that. So anyway, I just had to get that plug in and, and thank you again for all you do. It's amazing. It really is at what the organization does. We're blessed to have a collaborative organization, public-private partnership like, like QUOTA and what y'all do along with our Parks and Recs. And it, it keeps people talking and saying good things about our city.
Well, thank you. I did want to say that, yeah, we are looking into a phase two just to do some enhancements out there. And one of the top priorities is the LED lighting. I know that's part of us Splotz funding or something. Maybe we could work together where we could go ahead and make that happen and see how the funds come in later or something if we can collaborate on that.
Counselor Tucker?
I actually had wanted to speak on Ms. Elamine's.
Ladies, thank you very much. We'll, we'll get Holly with you and we'll get the MOU constructed. Thank you.
I know Chief, Chief Mathis is in the back and we, we've been doing a lot of neighborhood watch meetings and I was ac- actually able to get a detail over in the Belvedere Park area and some other areas based on help with Chief Mathis. So I know Counselor Huff is not here, but I'm gonna ask Chief Mathis if he could add a detail for that Shaw Street and get with Ms. Elamine to ensure that he gets the exact area that she was mentioning. But also a resident requested after going through Belvedere Park and seeing that we did such a great job. I think it was over seventy-plus citations that was given in a one-day, two-day period. It, it was a, a lot of good effort from that detail that was requested. And I know you didn't actually ask for actual detail, but I'm asking for a detail for you because that is my area, Carver Heights, where I grew up. And I do know they speeding like crazy, going like it's a speedway on Carver Street. But please get with Ms. Elamine, Chief Mathis, and also Air Amber Drive because it's a motor speedway as well. Thank you.
Love you so much.
Thank you. Alright, and I think that's all from the public agenda. So we'll move on now. Well, I tell you what, let's pull the proclamation up for New Horizons. Thank y'all have been very patient. I'm sorry this got turned in kind of late. But the mayor pro tem will present it. If you want to come up to the podium and we'll.
Thank you, Mayor. This, it's my pleasure to present the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month was first acknowledged in nineteen forty-nine to celebrate recovery and raise awareness of mental health being essential to a person's overall health and well-being. And whereas bringing awareness to this important, to the importance of mental health reduces the stigma and discrimination that is sometimes associated with those who seek treatment. Whereas the appropriate and effective mental health treatment, individuals are given the opportunity to manage their illness and lead more productive and fulfilling lives. Whereas New Horizons Behavioral Health provides various services and specialty programs like Reach and Emerge that provide affordable and effective mental health rehabilitation care for adults and adolescents with mental health, with mental illnesses and co-occurring disorders that successfully integrates them into our community. And whereas New Horizons Behavioral Health conducted an in-depth and current community health needs assessment that suggests the need for greater community awareness and educational mental health in Muskogee County. And whereas New Horizons Behavioral Health is proud to participate in the collaboration with other healthcare professionals in our community to better serve individuals regarding every aspect of their well-being and through integrated healthcare, because there is no health without mental health. And now therefore, our mayor, Skip Pinderston of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-four as Mental Health Awareness Month.
We'd like to thank the council. I am Dr. Pamela Shaw and I work at one of the New Horizon offices on Second Avenue where I provide physical health, mental health, and substance abuse. And that substance abuse details the opiate use disorder. I'm the provider that provide the medication, which we serve the uninsured, the insured, and underinsured. And our medications we can offer for the, especially the heroin addiction, the medications are free. So we just want to get that out there to the community and let, let everyone know that we are here and available for our community here. We appreciate that proclamation.
Y'all do a fantastic job and, and I apologize again for the oversight. I'm sorry y'all had to stick around a little longer than you had planned. If you would come around, let us shake your hand. Thank you for all that you do.
I wanted to recognize Dr. Rickman. That Community Mental Health Needs Assessment has been recognized by the state of Georgia and by a national consultant that we are working with on the CCVHC conversion as one of the best community mental health needs assessment they have seen in the country. So we're very proud of Dr. Rickman and the work she did. And we're very proud of the Community Mental Health Needs Assessment and wanted to share it with you. It's on our website if anybody is interested in sharing with your constituents, but just wanted to get the word out about that.
Thank you.
Again, very proud of Dr. Rickman and her work.
Thank y'all for what you do in the city and around, actually through the region. So thank you. Alright, Mr. City Manager, it's your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got two items and then some purchases. The first item is payment of attorney fees for the sheriff's office in the amount of nineteen thousand.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Chris, please put it on the screen. Counselors, you can enter your votes, please. Well, need to finish the vote so I can get back to that screen.
It is not the total amount and the resolution calls for pay, payment of the nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, thirty cents. And on the current legal matter, through the end of the current fiscal year. And we do know that there, there will be more to come.
It will cover what is expended so far and then through the fiscal year on this matter. Okay. Alright. Still got a few folks hadn't voted. We got one more, maybe, that's not in there? Okay, good. That's approved.
Next, Mr. Mayor, I've got Georgia Emergency Management Agency, Homeland Security, State of Georgia Game Activity.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve item two. Any further discussion on that? Alright, Chris? Counselors, please register your vote. I think we got one more. Alright, that's approved. Alright. Alright, so we've got a motion, I guess, to approve A, C, E, G, H, and I. Is that correct? Alright, is there a second for those items? Alright, all those in favor of those items, please say aye. Alright, any opposed? Alright, so now we'll go back to A and Mr. Hugley, if you would, as you do the ones, just, just go all the way through all of them.
Okay. So A is confiscated firearms for credit for the Columbus Police Department. They'll use them for credit to acquire eighteen Rock River, River rifles and accessories. I'll come back to B. I've moved to C, professional survey and services for Finance Department, Revenue Division, and Engineering Department. And this is with Moon's Meet as a primary and then a secondary contractor, EMC. And the survey and services, as you probably know, are in conjunction with the application process for alcohol beverage license in Muskogee County. And then, of course, any needs that engineering would have. I'm gonna skip D and come back. E would be thermal imagers with feature pack for fire EMS. Allows them to see into a situation where there's a heat. And, and they need those on every fire apparatus. I'm gonna skip F and go to G, declaration of surplus and donation of the Scotty Firehouse trailer for fire EMS, and they do want to donate that trailer to the Harris County Consortium of Fire Chiefs. H, surplus vehicles, these are vehicles where frames were damaged, and they've taken the engine and all other salvageable parts that we would be able to use on other vehicles, and those vehicles will become scrap metal. I is on-call project management services for capital improvement projects, and we've got...
Question on I?
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
What's your question on it?
Multiple vendors on an annual contract. We've got Aaron and Clements, Inc., BD Partner, BDR Partners LLC, ProCon Consulting LLC, Skanka USA. We've got Turner and Townsend Harry and W.C. Bradler Real Estate. And these are, this is for on-call project management services for capital improvement projects. You know, we've got a lot going on, and it would be on an as-needed basis, but it would be for projects anywhere from five hundred thousand to over fifty million. That's I, and I'm happy to answer.
Right, Mr. City Manager, my question would be, and I know in the past, I mean, it's got on-call services for capital improvement projects. I know in the past that we've had construction, construction management, construction management services, but how do you go through the process of picking, you've got several on the list there, of picking the entity that matches up with the capital project?
Well, you know, we've done it with engineering, we've done it with accounting, and we may have three or five, and we will look at the particular vendor, if you will, who would best fit, be the best fit for that project based on what it is.
And then, does that come back to council, or is that determined by executive?
Yes, it would come back to you for approval, obviously, with five hundred thousand. Okay, they're saying, Deputy City Manager over that area is saying that if you approve this, then it would be on-call, and we could select a vendor. But for five hundred thousand dollars, I can tell you, you know, my preference would be to bring it to you and let you know what we're doing.
Thank you.
All right. I'll go back to the ones that were pulled, Mayor.
Okay.
And we pulled, Counselor Crabbe pulled B, which is contract extension and auditing services. We are currently with Malden and Jenkins, as you know, and that contract expires June 30th this year, and we're asking to extend the annual contract for the auditing services with Malden and Jenkins for one year, and that will allow us the time that we need to go back out with an RFP. So we're asking for an extension.
Counselor Crabbe?
So it expires on June 30th, and you're extending it until when?
It would be until June 30th, that same time, one year.
For a full year?
It's a one-year.
I guess my concern is, this is the first year that we've had an auditing committee, and so it seems to me that maybe the auditing committee should be a part of this. I feel like it would be more transparent to switch up auditing firms every so often. I don't, you know, I would like the auditing committee, the audit committee, to look into that and see what they would advise us to do on that. It just seems like different firms will see things differently. I know in my profession, when we have appraisers come out and appraise property, you could have three appraisers go out, and you'd have three different appraisals. So, you know, I just think that it would be good to have different eyes on the books. And so I'd like to know what others around the table feel about that.
Well, and Mayor, I will say, this is for a one-year extension, and certainly that, if they approve this, it would allow TAM to do, to obviously engage the audit committee or whomever wants to have input on this, but this is about a one-year extension, and of course, that TAM or engagement can be allowed.
I think that's what the audit committee was originally tasked with, is working with the external auditor. So I think it's perfectly appropriate for that audit committee to take a look and maybe over the next year. I don't know if there's enough time.
In the short.
Right now, but certainly that would have to be moving forward. I think they'd wanna do regular RFPs to try to see who's out there with an interest in doing the services.
Counselor Tucker?
What's the normal time period for RFP process? And I'm just asking 'cause I know that, you know, last year we got one done like in fifteen days. So would it take longer?
Yes, absolutely, it will take longer than fifteen days. It depends on, you know, what we're dealing with in RFP. I mean, if you talk about Indigent Care, and that's the old name, it takes a while, as you can see. If you talk about the ambulance building, that took a while. I've been talking to Chief Scarpere, I thought we'd have it here in February, and then I thought we would have it in March, in May, and now we're, it's on the agenda. And so it just depends, and this is one, I think, would take, you can't do it in fifteen days. I don't know of any, really, that we can do in fifteen days.
It was that we did the one for baseball for fifteen days with fifty million dollars, so that's why.
We can talk about baseball if you wanna talk about baseball.
No, 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 no. That's why I was just saying that, because actually a citizen had came to me in reference to that, in far as the time periods that it takes for us to do certain things, and certain things we do it faster than others.
Well, I found like that's a jab at baseball, but we can move on from there.
Yeah, but, so it's May. I was just thinking whether or not we could do it within, 'cause I know we've had some other people besides, besides, I'm talking to you, Finance Director, matter of fact, Finance Director. We've had some other individuals besides Malden Jenkins that have done this for us, for the city prior to...
Yeah, we had Albright-Floydberry for more than thirty years before Malden and Jenkins.
Thank you, madam. I was looking at Madam Finance Director.
Well, I understand, but she works under City Manager.
I'm not trying to be nasty. Is it possible for you to speak, ma'am, in reference to?
I think I just... I don't know, what is the question?
Could we get an RFP done timely enough? I mean...
Well, that is the, that is actually the point of the extension. The timeframe in terms of getting an RFP done really depends on the schedule of the participants. You know, I understand that the audit committee meets on a bi-monthly?
No, we have not, we have not decided.
Oh, okay.
Well, right now, yeah.
It's quarterly, it's been quarterly, okay. Well, I knew it wasn't monthly.
Yeah, but we can have special call as well.
Understood. And so this will certainly allow us time to coordinate with the audit committee, like Counselor Crabbe mentioned, this is the first time that we would put these services out with the RF, with the, for an RFP with the audit committee being established. So, you know, obviously, June 30th is upon us, and we have deadlines that we have to meet in accordance to our debt service requirements and required, in accordance to the Department of Audits for the state. We have to have our financials audited and ready to go. Our timeline is December 31st, and so we need to have an auditor pretty much working now during the preliminary work so we can have our audit completed hopefully timely this year for FY 24. So that's the purpose of the extension for this particular firm, but it'll give us enough time to put out the RFP, which takes about three, can take about three to six months.
So the first date, the first deadline is, what's the actual date for the first deadline? No, I'm talking about far as the information, you were saying that we gotta stay on the timeline? This, is that the December 31st?
It is.
So we...
Everything has to be done and wrapped up and tied with a bow.
By December 31st?
By December 31st.
And you all start working at what timeframe?
Well, we are honestly hitting the ground running now. I mean, preliminary work in terms of the year-end audit is now, quite honestly. There are some items that they would have typically tested that have been delayed pursuant to the extension.
Okay, so you already started, and we have to get it done by December 1st. It was just a question in reference to should we do it for a year or can we do it for six months? That was just like one of the questions that was asked.
Well, we wanna make sure that even after the audit is complete by December 31st, that they have time to present the audit to the council. I mean, that usually comes...
Yeah, at the beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the following year. So we just wanna make sure we have enough time to cover all of the services that they typically provide to us through the audit process.
Thank you.
Well, we've got a few other people that need, wanna speak. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, please don't misinterpret what I'm about to ask, but what involvement does the researching Finance Director, I'm sorry, the Revenue and Finance Director have in selecting the auditor?
Ask that question again now?
What, what does the Director of Finance, what does she, what does she play in selecting the auditor?
Well, as...
She or he, whatever the case may ultimately be.
Yeah, I don't, of course, we have a selection committee that we put together. Do you typically serve, you haven't served on the selection committee?
Honestly, with, for this particular auditor, no.
Well, I shouldn't use the word evaluation. They submit, and then there is an evaluation committee.
Yes, that's an evaluation committee for the RFP.
And I guess my question, are you...
Have I served on?
An evaluation committee.
An evaluation committee for the selection of an auditor?
As finance director, no.
And in this particular case, in all likelihood, I would be a non-voting member, but a member on the committee.
Yeah. So there's...
My concern, Mr. City Manager, is I want us to be completely transparent on this.
Sure.
And to have the person who is the Director of the department that basically does the financing for the city of Columbus, to be on the committee to select the person who's gonna check their work, it's just a little troubling to me.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't in any way think that Ms. Alexander has done anything inappropriate. Please don't, don't take that.
Understand, understand.
But perhaps we need to take a look at who is on that committee and how that committee functions. I would certainly think that the Director would, could report to that committee, could talk to that committee about what's going on, but to have any influence at all on who the firm will be that's gonna check your work, I think is...
Absolutely agree with you.
A little troubling.
Absolutely agree.
I would serve in a non-voting capacity.
Well, I don't care if you're a non-voting member, if you are a member, that is a problem to me. If you are a witness or if you tell them what's, answer their questions, I don't have a problem with that, but for you to be a member, non-voting or voting or whatever of that committee, I have a problem with that.
I understand, and we, and I'm glad we're having this conversation early, 'cause we don't need to go through a process and come back and then, and their questions. And so I get, and I appreciate you bringing that to the table for discussion.
And please, as I said, don't, don't, don't think that I think that anything has been done wrong. I just don't want us to do anything wrong. I want us to be as transparent as we can be.
Understand.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, you know, the mayor is right. One of the tasks that's been given to the external auditing committee is to look and evaluate work and along with the external auditor. And I know that that conversation has been discussed amongst many members. It hasn't been formal yet, but I think as time goes by, that's gonna be evaluated, and probably recommendations will be made to the council on that, and certainly in the future, I foresee them being more and more involved in the process with the external auditor. I think they already were this past year, and certainly if, if work is ongoing, then we need to continue that and go ahead and wrap up the, the formal audit if it's currently in place. But I think it'd be wise, just as a recommendation, to, look, it doesn't hurt to have an RFP on file. The RFP is the RFP when it's dealing with the external auditor. It doesn't mean, it doesn't matter who it is, it's RFP. So to be able to go ahead and craft that and put it on file, I think would be a good thing and save a lot of time. Like I said, I'm sure that this discussion will be had again, and there will probably be some recommendations most likely made to council dealing in this area. So I don't see any harm of go ahead and having something like that on file versus having to come back and do it later, because it is one of the goals of that committee, I believe, is to evaluate the external auditing committee and just to make sure that the citizens, the city is being served well.
Counselor Begley?
Counselor Davis is right. This is something the audit committee is reviewing. In the first year of the audit committee, a lot of it was setting up, you know, cadence for how frequently to meet, but the next meeting is supposed to address the roles and responsibilities of the audit committee. As far as getting RFP crafted, I think that would be helpful. The audit committee, even if, whether informally or formally, can review the RFP. I think for this year, the timing would be difficult, so I lean towards going ahead and approving this for the next year, and this next year, as the audit committee defines their roles and responsibilities, you know, making sure there's, proactively looking at the RFP to ensure there's plenty of time to do it, 'cause I think there are questions about the process and how the audit committee would be involved, and so starting that sooner rather than later would probably be helpful to prepare for the next year purchase.
And we have the draft specifications, and I will most certainly circulate that to the audit committee soonest, probably by the end of this week.
And so is there, I've never known when you were gonna meet, 'cause I don't get the notices. Is it possible that, I mean, I'd like to attend one of your meetings. 'Cause I've called the clerk, and I've asked you to let me know when they're gonna meet, and you've committed to doing that. Okay?
Yeah, this past year, there wasn't as much advance notice because there was a delay in the audit, and so a lot of the timing of the audit committee was, how do we, we want to review the draft of it, but I know there was a delay of the overall external audit, and so that was why the, the timing wasn't as, as known as advanced because of the delay.
Well, and I just figured if I don't know, the citizens wouldn't know either. Well, clerk, I've talked to you back and forth, and the Deputy City Manager called me because she didn't know and couldn't find out, and you didn't know and couldn't find out, and that's why I called the clerk. So clerk, was it online?
Hit your lights, yeah, thank you.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, it is advertised online under events on the city's main web page.
Under events?
Yes.
But you've committed to just letting me know?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
So just to clarify, we, I think, because there was, and just to make it black and white, we are requesting an RFP. we are requesting an RFP to be put on file for, um, other auditing services options, correct?
Nobody's, nobody's asked about a RFP being put on file.
But we, we will be doing an RFP.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I will send out the draft.
Soon is, is what you said, right?
Great.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make that.
Yes, we will be doing an RFP.
All right, since there was some crypticness there, so. But, I, I don't know, do you need a motion to do that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Have, have you agreed to do, do the RFP?
Yes, we're going to do an RFP.
Okay, great.
All right, I don't think it needs any.
Okay.
Excellent. The end.
I don't think it needs any action then, so we're good.
Well, we do need the extension.
Yeah, I mean, we need to hold an item on the agenda.
All right, if, there's a, there's a motion and a second to, uh, approve, I forgot what item.
Item B.
Item B.
Yeah.
Uh, any dis, further discussion? All right, if you would, Chris, post it and then we'll let counsel enter the votes. All right, that's approved.
And, and so the other item that was pulled by Counselor Crabbe was ambulance D, ambulance billing and collection services for Columbus Fire EMS. And we're asking to authorize the execution of an annual contract with EMS Management and Consultants, Inc., uh, for ambulance billing and collection services for Columbus Fire EMS. Um, the services are required to enhance and develop an internal revenue cycle. Uh, EMS Consultants, Inc. will provide a number of services. I know it's something that Fire EMS Chief Sal Scarper has been talking about for some time. And so we did do an RFP and we're prepared to move forward with what he has been talking about.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Reviewing the budget, I see that there are, um, the collections, um, department from finance is being moved to fire an EMS. And so I, I see a conflict here. If we're going to have, if we're going to, um, have an RF, accept the RFB for outside services, then what about these employees that were moving over to fire an EMS? I want, what's going to happen to them and why are we doing that?
Well, uh, it was at the recommendation, I, and that is actually some material that's in the budget review packet that was requested by the council in terms of recommendations that were made by audits. Um, I assume external and internal audits. Uh, one of the recommendations that was made was, um, either additional staffing, if we were going to keep the billing in-house, or if we were not going to keep the billing in-house and go with a third-party vendor, that there be, uh, still co, point of contacts within the city um, to manage, um, compliance of the contract. And so the, uh, individual that's in the Finance Department is currently the point of contact for Medicare, Medicaid, for the private, um, insurance companies. And so, so that there's continuity. Um, and also, I think it was, uh, your request, Counselor Crabbe, that, uh, they have staffing to support, um, going out to a third-party vendor. And so this is that staffing, um, like I said, to promote continuity in terms of the, um, contacts that are already on file for the city with the various insurance providers.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Chief Scarper?
Good morning, Mayor, uh, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney. Uh, the, uh, the RFP is indeed to, to move the billing services out from, within the Finance Department to an external agency. Uh, the individual, we are looking to bring somebody on to help manage that process. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars of billing, uh, over the next several years. Uh, we don't have the bandwidth to support, uh, within our department currently, uh, to support the, the, the functions associated with supporting that, that contract. So we had asked, uh, in a previous meeting to, uh, at least get a, a person to help facilitate that process. Uh, and then during this process, uh, with the RFP billing and, uh, since we happen to be in the budget season, uh, Director Alexander offered one of her personnel to fill that role so we would not have to add another FTE to the, to the payroll of the city. Uh, and unfortunately for us, the individual that we're looking at has great familiarity with the process already, uh, has really working knowledge of all the Medicaid laws and, uh, Medicare laws and things that we have no, uh, understanding of. Uh, and so the hope is to bring this person, uh, from Finance into our department when we outsource the billing, to help manage that process, to facilitate that process moving forward. It is a, uh, significant, um, a very significant program, uh, and we just don't have the capacity currently, uh, to manage it on our own.
Is it just one person?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it several people?
It, it's one person to, to work directly with the vendor.
Is it temporary or is it permanent?
It is permanent.
So what's happening with the other employees that did collections within the Finance Department?
Um, those employees will remain within the Finance Department. As you know, um, we just went through, uh, external and internal audits. Uh, one of the, um, areas of improvement that was identified was some of our collection processes in terms of, um, the collection of taxes, whether it's occupation taxes, um, other excise taxes. And so those individuals will now focus per, well, I should say, place more focus on collecting those taxes for the Finance Department.
So, so what percentage is ambulance, Medicare, Medicaid, uh, of your collections?
Honestly, um, right now, I would say it's about eighty, eighty-five to ninety percent, eighty, between eighty and ninety percent.
Significant.
It's a significant, um, portion of their current, uh, job duties on a daily basis is the keying of the, um, the bills for the ambulance service.
Counselor Thomas?
Uh, Chief, uh, this person will be a member of the, uh, Fire EMS?
Yes, ma'am, it would be a civilian person working, uh, as a member of our department.
And can one person handle all of that, um, all of the, uh, process that, 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 that takes not only, um, you know, I mean, I would, I would think that it might take more than one employee to do the kind of work you're talking about if we're talking about millions of dollars.
The, the for, the fortunate part is the, the contractor, assuming that the, the RFP and, and we move forward with the vendor, they're going to handle the bulk of the work. The challenge that we have is we don't have the capacity within the department to interface and, and understand kind of what they're doing. Uh, and so we need that kind of on, on our side to help manage that process. Uh, so the, the bulk of the billing, the actual billing will come by the vendor.
Yeah.
It's the other stuff that goes along with it, that, that's what this person is going to be focused on. Making sure that we are pro, providing them the right stuff that they need to bill, reconciling, uh, payments as they come back, working with our, um, working with Medicare and Medicaid and understanding the changes in laws, which unfortunately, uh, that is not a skill set of ours. Uh, and so fortunately, the individual that, uh, Director Alexander has identified has that skill set. And so we're hoping to be able to capture that, that individual.
If I may share what the consultant will be doing, EMS Management and Consultants, Inc. will provide the following. And, uh, billing of patient care reports. And they got a lot going on with that, electronic invoicing, all collections and data tracking for claims, accounting and reporting, analytical services, technology services, training EMS personnel at no additional cost. And so I think that's why you won't need more than that one person just being the guardian and making sure that, to keep them in line with all that they're supposed to be doing, right?
That's correct. We're hopeful that the one individual will be that kind of go-between between us and the vendor, uh, and serve our, invariably, there's going to be with thirty-eight thou, we ran thirty-eight thousand medical calls last year and that number is only going to rise. Invariably, there'll be some challenges from time to time, uh, and that individual will help facilitate those challenges.
And so the vendor will be the one actually sending out the bills and collecting the money? And all of that kind of thing?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes.
So the next item that Counselor Crabbe pulled was elf. And, um, that item, um, is household garbage carts for Public Works.
The question, the question I had on this one is, why are we introducing another color? I mean, why not just, it seems, it doesn't seem efficient and it do, it seems like that now they're going out and pulling the extra black carts and then they're going to distribute brown carts when it, it seems, it seems if we just have, give them two black carts, um, it's simpler for the citizens who have already learned the color system and it's less work for Public Works Integrated Waste Workers.
Well, um, you know, as I travel, um, to work this morning, I noticed some people have two black carts.
Right.
Right now.
They already have them and now, and in this, in this, they're already picking them up, they're.
That, that's right. And so to be clear as to who has purchased a second cart that would be brown, they don't have to guess at it. I'll let you speak to why, the staff, they work on this stuff every day. And, and so you have a reason that you want, that you're proposing that we do this.
Absolutely. We have, uh, excuse me, we have a lot of, um, locations that have multiple black carts that we know should only have one. And so what we're doing now is having to empty the carts, take the carts. Sometimes I get into a, a verbal confrontation with the person who has the additional carts, knowing that they're not, they didn't buy that additional cart. We haven't distributed, distributed any additional carts as of today. So anyone that you see out there with multiple carts of any color, they were not given to them or distributed to them by us. They were taken from someone else's residence and utilized at their residence. So in order to stop that kind of behavior, number one, we'll know when you get that additional cart, you paid your fifty-five dollars, that additional cart is brown and it's yours. If we ever have a question when we go up, we're looking, if there's a brown cart there, it should be on your, your water bill that you paid for it. If not, then we know that it's stolen and we will take it away.
Or you got it from someone else.
That they got it from someone else, yeah.
A neighbor who was moving out may have said, take this cart so you'll have.
Oh, I get it. Because the, so the carts were stolen from one of my properties that I managed while it was vacant.
Exactly. So we're hoping that this will reduce the number of carts that are being borrowed.
But couldn't we just use stickers? We, couldn't we just put a sticker on the second cart?
Well, the brown cart costs the same as a black cart. So, I mean, you know, I buy the black cart and then go have to put a sticker on seven hundred carts. Just buy the brown cart. And we know, there, there are no games. You can't play games with, you know, your neighbor moved out and there's no one over there. I'll just get this cart and then the neighbor moves in, someone moves in, they don't have a cart, they call Public Works and they say, we don't have a cart, what do we do?
I guess the reason why I'm thinking, um, not introducing a second color and maybe using a sticker instead is because then the brown car, you know, if you have them both black, you have multiuses for the black carts and you can put stickers on them if it's a second cart or you can just leave it as, you know, just a black cart.
Yeah.
But if you have brown and black, then you're going to have to continue to buy black and then also buy the brown ones also, where you wouldn't necessarily have to buy a separate group of, for a second color.
Yeah, they don't have to buy a black cart. Those are given to them. Those are free.
Now, I'm talking about the city. I'm not talking about the individual citizen. I'm talking about the city.
So.
We could have more black carts that could be used for this or that instead of, you know, anticipating how many brown carts you have to buy. Um, you could just use a black cart with a sticker on it.
I, I mean, why, so why buy seven hundred black carts and then go put seven hundred stickers when we can just do seven hundred brown carts? I, I don't know. What kind of sticker you're going to put on, you got to go buy stickers. They, they, we, well, the, 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 the staff, the staff recommends brown c, carts. These are Public Works staff, not me. It's the people who do it every day. I recommend a brown cart.
Counselor Kogle?
So what, what about the, because I'm pretty sure, ninety-nine percent sure that I've requested an extra cart or two for people in the last year. And so do we go out and, are you going to be able to track who we've requested extra, before this conversation of charging for extra carts? Are you going to be able to go back and switch out those extra carts or charge those, for those extra?
We have not distributed any additional carts at this time yet. We're still waiting on the Water Works to finish, uh, making sure that they're ready to go with that fee. And in the meantime, we've been planning to go in this direction with a different, different color cart to, to visualize or to visualize for us that this is an additional cart and not a cart that's been misplaced or borrowed from someone else.
Okay. Well, what if, what if somebody has gone out and purchased the exact same cart? And they have an.
It would have to have the city logo on it. It, it will not have the city logo on it.
Yeah, your carts have Public Works.
They have, Columbus Consolidated Government on the side.
All right, there we go. Thanks.
Sure.
I think that's it.
That's, we're, we're just asking to purchase seven hundred carts.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? There's a second. Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All right, Chris, you want to put that up on the screen for us, please, sir?
Mayor, I believe those are all the items that were pulled.
All right.
And so I do have, uh, two updates. Um, one's a Golden Park update, um, and, uh, and then the jail update. And so we have, uh, Ryan, and you're going to introduce our guest?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, good morning, Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, have an update, uh, on the progress, both design and construction at Golden Park. If you've been, uh, by South Commons and the park lately, you've seen a lot of work, uh, happening, uh, moving forward on schedule. So we do have our partners here. Uh, our design-build contractor is Brassfield and Gory. Uh, they're represented by Wes Kelly. I know he has members of his design team. So, um, I'll turn it over to, to Wes and let him introduce the rest of the members.
All right, perfect. Good morning. We're here to talk about the updates at Golden Park. My name is Wes Kelly. I'm Vice President of Brassfield and Gory, uh, our local office here in Columbus. And with me today, I have Tyler Martindale, who's our Senior Project Manager. I have Tucker English, who is with Populous, our design partner. And I have Jamal Chowkow with Heck Burdeshaw. So quickly, we're going to touch through the project team, talk a little bit to you today about the design process of the park, kind of how we arrived at, um, our design. We'll go through the design, show you some, uh, renderings and things like that of the current park and then we'll give a little bit of update on the construction progress and talk a little through schedule. So the team that we have assembled, obviously, City of Columbus is the owner. The tenant is Diamond Baseball Holdings. The affiliate is the Atlanta Braves Organization. We are listed as the design-build partner at Brassfield and Gory. Uh, we have selected Populous as our architect. They are first in class in the arena of sports design. Uh, and we have partnered with them at Truist Park and the renovations to McKenna Field at the University of Florida, as well as Protective Life Stadium in Birmingham, Alabama. So we have a great relationship with Populous. Uh, they provide first-in-class services for sports and sports venues. Uh, locally, we selected Heck Burdeshaw to help support the last. Locally, we selected Heck Burdeshaw to help support. The last renovation at Golden Park was in the nineties to get ready for the Olympics. And Heck Burdeshaw was the design firm that did those, drew those modifications. And so it was nice to have their wealth of knowledge and resources to bring to bear. And then civil engineering firm that we chose is Moon Meeks here locally, represented by Larry French, who also was the designer for the nineteen ninety-four renovations. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Tucker and he's gonna talk a little through about the design.
Alright, we're very excited to be a small part of bringing professional baseball back to Columbus. We got a couple of design drivers to go through here quickly to, that got us to where we are today with the design. The first is tradition. Everybody knows baseball is built on tradition. And Columbus has a very rich tradition of professional baseball, as, as you can see on the sign there with the who's who of Hall of Famers that have come through. We wanna not only embrace the tradition, but we wanna help build it for the future as well. Community is the second one. Minor League Baseball is, at its core, community-driven. Oftentimes, the team moves in and becomes a part of the fabric of the community itself, teaming with the city along with the local businesses and bringing families into the, to the park, multiple times during the summer. We'll go through a quick site plan here. I'll start on the right side. The large parking lots where everyone really parked to come to the, to Golden Park. And as you come in, we will see a new clubhouse building that will house the home and visiting team and all of the associated program that is necessary to house minor league baseball. There's a very robust program that, that has to go along with it to ensure that a team can be, can be hosted here for multiple years. To go along with that is a new playing field, new fencing, new netting, new sports lighting. And that really will be a good foundation for the team as they move in to be here for, for many, many years. Just to the plan south of that is a new entry plaza with new gates, and we'll see some renderings of that on the next slide. As we come in through the new entry gates to the left, that is a part of our community zone there. You can see a sponsorship area and a kids' zone to really activate the entry and give multiple options for fans to view the game and different activities for them to do during the game. In, on the left field side, there's also another opportunity for a fan zone, for possible community involvement there. We're working with the team owner to figure out exactly what that is and how to best serve the community with that. Moving further in, you'll see a new patron amenities building. This is a new three-story building on the first baseline. The bottom floor will be new, a new kitchen and concessions. Second floor will be operations offices and the third floor will be a new club space with dedicated seating that will be used for baseball but can also be a community space for events to be held throughout the year. The ballpark itself is very historic and we don't wanna take away from the history of that. We do wanna add some creature comforts that most people are, will agree is, is lacking in the current stadium. So new, new chair backs throughout, new concessions and restrooms below. So that it really brings it up to, to today's standards. To move on to the next slide, see a few renderings here. The upper left, upper left and upper right is that entry plaza we were talking about with the new gates. The building to the right is the player building. It also will house a, a team store and a ticket office. You can see the upper left rendering, the building on the left is that patron amenities building. A better view is the bottom left corner there. You can see the top level is the club space with the views to the field and dedicated seating. And the lower right corner is the kids' zone and fan activation area. And like I said, we're working with team ownership for exactly what that is right now. That rendering shows possibly Wolfel Ball Playground area, could be inflatable, things like that to, to really bring families in there. And I appreciate the time, I appreciate the city and all that they have done with, with helping us to get this far and Wes and his team. It's a breakneck, breakneck pace.
Would you go back one slide?
Sorry, breakneck pace here that we're trying to get baseball here in twenty twenty-five.
I just wanna bring attention to, at the bottom, what, what does that say at the bottom in red?
It's a concept image, so we are still working through the final design on everything.
So it's subject to change?
Yeah.
Okay, just a quick.
The, the one question I get is, how many of the seats are covered? So as a percentage between the Diamond Club and kinda the, the covered seats in the middle, what percentage of the seats would you say are covered?
I mean, it's the same percentage as covered now. We're not extending the canopy, any, any, so whatever is covered now is covered and whatever is uncovered is uncovered. It's like half maybe is covered versus uncovered, but we're not, we're not expanding any covered seat in there.
Okay.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. It may just, may just be my eyes, but it looks like right field is shorter than left field. Is it? Am I seeing that right?
I think that may be your eyes. We are adjusting, so we are adjusting the playing field. So we are, we are backing home plate up towards the, the stadium bowl. And so the, the wall will come in, but they will all be major league standard field dimensions, so they are the same. The, the, kind of the, the right field areas where, so your home clubhouse, your visitor clubhouse and all your umpires will all come onto the field from the right field corner. So there is a lot going on in that area, which may kinda throw the eye a little bit.
Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Tyler, you wanna talk through your construction?
Talk through schedule real quick. Here's a drone shot of where we were a couple of weeks ago. Here on the next slide here is a brief schedule update of where we've been the last couple of months and where we're going. Project was awarded at the city council meeting on February twenty seventh. And since then, our design team has been working around the clock to get it started on site. We prepared a demo design package, a site development package with Moon Meeks and a foundation design. And at the bottom of the slide here, you can see our construction schedule. We started on site with the building demo April tenth. And shortly thereafter, on April twenty-second, we jumped right into the site development. So here shortly, you'll start seeing a lot further development. We'll start getting into foundations for these new buildings here in the next couple of weeks with the patron building on the first base side of the stadium and then the clubhouse building, starting to dig footings there. So as you, as we get into June, July, August, you'll start seeing those structures coming up out of the ground.
Alright, any, any questions?
From the players' perspective, when they go into the dugout, will that lead into the locker rooms?
No, so we are providing new dugouts as part of the, the PDL, which is the Players Development League, which is the minor league baseball standard. The current dugouts do not meet that standard, so we are providing new dugouts. We'll dig them deeper as the field elevation changes. But the, all locker rooms, training rooms, everything associated with the teams will be in right field. So there will be a bathroom located in the dugout for players in game, but other than that, everything else is in the right field building.
Okay. So if a player gets frustrated or the coach needs to talk to somebody, there's nowhere for them to go?
Maybe a little bathroom.
Alright. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for the update. So I know there will, there will be a groundbreaking. I think it's been delayed a little bit, but we'll, we'll be publicizing that so folks know when it's coming out.
Sure. So the final update is jail update. We talked to you a few weeks ago about some challenges at the jail. I see the sheriff is in, in the back, but Director Drell Short is here and she's been working with a consultant. And the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, good morning, everyone, if I haven't had a chance to say it yet to you. Mr. Milton Bonner has been our consultant for several years, working on various projects throughout the city. He is a, the owner of MLB Environmental Health and Safety LLC. And if you recall, about, about a month or so ago, he came forward and gave you a quick briefing on floor one of the jail. It was during an executive session. And I've asked Mr. Bonner to come back because he's finally gotten the results for floors two through four. And he'll be able to give you another update on where we've, where we've come on floor one and what we found and where we need to do in, for floors two through four. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bonner and allow him to go ahead and give the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, City Manager.
Good morning.
Council personnel. As you know, we have started this project back in March of twenty-seventh. And we have aggressively attacked the jail facilities that has the mold growth. Now, a little bit about me, I'm Milton Bonner, owner of MLB Environmental Health and Safety. I have the designation of resonate, of registered professional industrial hygienist, certified environmental compliance manager, certified mold inspector, certified mold remediation contractor. In addition to that, I have a BA degree in chemistry from Auburn State University. I have a physics degree from Howard University. And I also have a BA, I'm sorry, a master's degree in, in health physics. With all of that, that entitled me to do the type of work that we have been doing at the jail. So we have progressively looked at the facility. We also have done. Some of the service that we provide is certified lid paint renovations. Okay, we are EPA certified lid based renovation firm, certified mold inspection, remediation, environmental sampling, remediation. We also do occupational safety and health training. We also do what we call occupation physician walkthrough. A lot of people ask us about that. How you do physician, occupation physician walkthrough is where occupation physician calls us and we go out to the facility and look at this various process that are going on in the facility, and then we can do the proper testing for that facility. Indoor air quality testing, what we did primarily for the jail, where we go out and do the testing for various areas of the jail to determine an exact remediation protocol. Industrial hygiene services, we can test just about anything under the sun when it comes to chemicals, gases and what have you. Hazwapp training. Hazwapp training is something that the federal government requires for people when you go on federal government sites. Stands, it's an acronym, stands for Hazardous Waste Operation and Emergency Response Training. And a lot of government facility will not let you come on that site unless you have that designation. As a matter of fact, people who've been assigned to do the remediation in jail are all Hazwapp or forty-hour certified trained environmental technicians. Health physics is where we go out and check for radiation, radon and people harmed and so forth. Muskogee County Jail, Project Scope. What we did, we went into the facility itself and we inspected it, all the areas of the jail itself, you know, trying to come up with the proper remediation protocol. Once we inspected the jail, we did what we call indoor air quality testing. We test these areas to see what type of concentration of mold, what type of mold species were there. And then once we got those testing result, that entitled us to come up with a proper remediation protocol. Of course, we reviewed the testing result, testing results and to see what type of mold species was present. And then, of course, we established the remediation protocol. This remediation process has been ongoing since March the twenty-seventh and is currently going on now. These are some of the things that we found during the hour inspection. As you can see here, the AC vents, you can see how they're clogged up. And you can see also the ceiling tiles that have mold growth and some ceiling tiles are missing. Here is inside an elevator where you can see the mold growth on the vent at the top of the elevator, elevator ceiling. And you can see the, also another AC vent that showed the vents are clogged up with mold and dust. As a matter of fact, once we start cleaning the vents, personnel, security personnel, other workers in the facility can tell there's marked improvement in the quality of air that's there. Matter of fact, you can hear the, since Wednesday it was cleaned up, you can hear the air whistling coming through the vent themselves. So you can see that's the type of material and that's mold is on that as well. This is also, the picture to the left there is in the jail, one of the dormitories. You can see the mold on the top of the ceiling there. Most of the showers are like this. All the ceilings have a lot of mold on them. And as you can see, the, most of this mold is what we call aspergillus pennisillin. Some maybe might be shade tominium type mold and some of them might be stachybotrys mold as well. When we encounter stachybotrys mold, we knew we was gonna encounter that because it has a high affinity for water. It's a water indicator mold. The slide to the right is also one of the AC vent. That's probably one that we cleaned though. And you can see also in some of the hallways and places, you can see how contaminated that particular vent, AC vent is. And you can see where they have some water damage also to the ceiling, where maintenance personnel have gone and maybe sometime tried to cut it out. What we are doing also is we getting rid of all of the mold. We also finding a lot of hidden mold. So when you all toured the facility, you all saw visible mold. But we see visible mold, but also we also finding hidden mold. We making the use, so we have infrared cameras, marsh meters and so forth to let us know. You won't know you got hidden mold until you actually test these areas or you use an infrared camera. And then it would reveal that that material, construction either is wet and then we know that material has to come out. And once we cut it, you can see on the other side, you can see the mold. This slide to the right is also showing us some mold on the ceiling. Here also, you see where we cut one of them down. See the mold on it? They're just hanging down. There's portion of the sheet drywall that's hanging down. And you can actually see the thick mold there, how bad it is there. But that was hidden. That wasn't visible mold. That was hidden mold. This is inside one of the dormitories here where we actually doing the indoor air quality testing. As we said earlier, this indoor air quality testing gonna tell us the concentration in the mold, how bad it is and what have you. So we can know what type of mold species we dealing with, so we can come up with the actual remediation protocol. And you can see upstairs here in some of the dormitories, these are some of the, here, right next to those is what we call the HVAC system. I might have a slide coming up showing you conditioning those as well. But here we have what we call a vacuum pump and we have a cassette that actually pull the mold out of the air. You know, this mold that you can't see. And these mold spores are so tiny, our eyes do not have the resolution to see them, but actually, we actually breathe them in and they make us see. This is the actual result of one of the tests for the holding seal. And then we compare that with an outdoor sample. As you can see, we have, look at the total at the bottom for the inside of the holding seal. It was two thousand three hundred and seven spores count per cubic meter compared to two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three outdoors. You always want indoors to be less than outdoors, but even this indoor concentration is a very high number. Remember on one of the summary reports I gave you showing that when you have a concentration of one to three hundred, that is considered a low level. Here you have two thousand three hundred and seven. Here you have two thousand three hundred and seven inside that holding cell there, okay? And you can also see the, to the far left, the individual mold species. For example, aspergillus pennicillin. If you come across and look at that middle column, you see where it says a hundred and sixty spores count per cubic meter compared to sixty-seven outdoors. So even that individual mold species is amplified in that holding cell. If you come down and you look at platosporum species, you see nine hundred and twenty, and you look at on the outside, it's six hundred and forty. Matter of fact, in this particular area, platosporum comprised forty percent of the mold in that particular area, okay? Also, we see stakyvotrus near the bottom, which is at six hundred and eighty compared to what, zero on the outside. Stakyvotrus mold species doesn't really get up in the air because it's kind of like a gelatin type mold species when it on surfaces. So it take a lot for it to get up in the air, to be aerosolized, okay? So but then, so we look at tests like this, and then that let us know what type of mold species we have here, and also what cleaning and necessary protocol to establish. Here is further with the indoor air quality testing where they compared area. Mold species above that red line, that red line is what we call the baseline, or the reference point. Anything over that red line is amplified, and that's not good. Here we have aspergillus amplified, we have platosporum amplified, we have minnella species amplified, and then of course, we have stakyvotrus amplified. So most of the jail, I'm gonna say, I would say maybe about eighty percent of the jail have situations like this where either you got hidden mold, and of course, you have a visible mold, but you have some condition like this, but there are some areas that are pretty good as well. Remediation protocol, we are following a strict EPA mold remediation protocol. We also following the Institute of Inspection Cleaning and Restoration Certification Standard S five twenty. We, we are aggressively remediating all fungal growth as rapidly as possible. As a matter of fact, as we go in the area and we remediate that area, we're getting feedback from the personnel, security personnel, and even for some inmates. Some of the inmates actually clapping their hands as we leave because they can tell the, the difference in the air quality there, the breathing, okay? We also repairing the defect that led to the water accumulation. That is in conjunction with the maintenance personnel there as well because we understand that you have a leak in the roof and several areas, so that has to be fixed. It doesn't make any sense to do all this remediation and you don't stop the water intrusion. So, well, we asking them to stop that, and we also asking them to aggressively attack the plumbing leaks that they're having all over the buildings. Once they do that, that would help get rid of the mold, okay? Remediation to contaminate material, infrastructure repair, that's what I just got talking about. So hopefully, that can be done in conjunction with our remediation as well. But all these steps, as it says here, are needed to ensure a healthy and safe working environment. Remediation process, here you see one of the environmental technicians. This is in the laundry room, laundry room, cleaning one of the AC vent. And the next picture to the right there is also in the laundry room where we actually cut out the section of that ceiling, that drywall there. And you think the next slide, you can see also the technician working cutting out, and then the slide to the right, see that was hidden mold, you couldn't see that, that was hidden mold. Okay, but that is type of material that's coming out, and it's highly contaminated with stakyvotrus, chitinium type mold, aspergillus type mold, and these are toxic mold, by the way. And what are we doing with it? So what we are doing, when we take this material here, we put it in a construction type bag. We don't take it out just like it is, we tie it up in the bag, and then we take it to the outside and of course dispose of it. This is inside the, actually, the inmate jail cell here, okay? Picture to the left, that was already in the process of being cleaned, we cleaned that. That was brown, by the way, and had a lot of mold on it, the vent at the bottom here, okay? And then you see the one to the right, that's how it looks now, presently look. This is in the HVAC closet, to the left, you can see the mold growth on the door. And you can see after we clean that door, to the right, okay? Inside these closet, we're doing, actually, we're actually not maids, but we're kind of forced to do some maid because there's a lot of debris and trash all up in there where the inmates have thrown a lot of things up in the, in the area there. So we're actually cleaning it out, we vacuuming everything out in there. So when we get through it, even that unit is cleaned also. But that's how they do a look, once we get through. This is in the kitchen area, you can see picture to the left, that dust and mold. And this is, by the way, right over where sometime they preparing the food at, for the inmates there. And you can see the picture to the right, how it looks now, okay? That vent, you see that vent there, you know, so it's got a lot of mold, dust. Most of the vents in the house, I think we have cleaned up to this point, probably over a hundred and twenty some odd vents that we have cleaned, got rid of the mold and the dust that were on those AC vents, and also the air return units as well. This is in the shower, where the inmates take their shower. And you can see how it look to the left there. You got all the mold, the dark areas, the rust, and then you can see how it look afterward as we clean it, okay? We get rid of the mold, okay? Now, why did, does it get like this? It gets like this because there's no ventilation, I mean, I'm sorry, there's no exhaust vent in there. That marshter has to go somewhere, so what the marshter is doing is attacking the ceiling since there are no exhaust vent in there, so for the new jail, you need to make sure when the design that they put an exhaust vent in, in the shower area as well. Otherwise, you're going to have the same condition in the new jail as you have in here. And, and these areas are very horrible, if you see how they look. But the inmates are taking showers in these areas, okay? But this how it looks now, and we've done many of these so far. And they can tell the difference, and also the security personnel said, man, you guys are doing an excellent job. You know, we didn't realize, I think the last time the vents was cleaned in the jail, they say, I think initially, maybe the second or third year after it was built. So you can imagine just why it looks the way it look because the vents never been cleaned but one time since the jail been built. Here again, you see one of the AC vents, and you can see the debris, the dust, mold is on it too. And you can see after we clean it, how it look. Now, we did encounter some problems with some of the vents because they have a special type of screw, a security screw. And we didn't have the equipment or tool to get, we went out and bought some, but even that didn't fit, so they had to order some. So we had to kind of, we did get them off, but once we got the bit, we was actually able to get them off readily. So this is how they look now. As I said, we, I think we've done over a hundred and twenty some odd vents, and you can see the improvement in the air quality when you go in there. Some people weren't even getting in the air at all because they were so clogged up. No air could even pass through them, but now the air can pass through. Okay, so at this time, if you have any questions, concerns, I also submitted a summary for the south tower, second, third and fourth floors. I don't know whether you all have that or not, but also we have cleaned that. We aggressively, we've been to the fifth floor area, the fifth tower, all over the jail. You know, in some areas, we are encountering some problems in that, you know, we can't get back to them because of the personnel. Maybe the personnel who were escorting us around, maybe is that sick. They, they, they telling us they are shorthanded, you know. We are working Monday through Friday, with the exception of Wednesday because they tell us on Wednesday, that's the very hard day for them. They don't have any personnel to be with us, so we just take Wednesday off. So, but we working Monday, Tuesday, of course, I mean, sorry, yeah, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday. They take a two-hour lunch break, so from eleven to one o'clock. So then they work up, my technician work up to eleven o'clock, and then they, they take a break and then they come back at one o'clock each day.
Well, we got a few questions for you.
Okay, sure.
Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say thanks for the, the photos. We knew that we had a, a major issue, we had did a walkthrough of the jail prior to you doing this. I had actually received a phone call, and it was towards the end of last year, from someone who was a employee at the school district, and a family member came out and had some upper respiratory issues. And now I can see why they have with the mold and the levels of mold and also exactly what you showed in those photos. I think one of the questions, you mentioned something in reference to the roof. You said that it's a leak?
Yes.
You said it's a leaking at the top?
Yeah, this is what I've been told, right, because you can see where water is coming all down several floors from the roof leaking.
Okay, so it's a leaky?
Particularly in the property room.
Which one?
The property, what they call the property.
Property room.
Right, where they keep the inmates.
But it, did you see anything in the records area where you ate, because that, that area had some severe?
Area too, right, yeah, the vents was extremely clogged in there with dust and mold.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, they are the one who actually saying that they can tell the difference in the air quality. In that.
In that area?
In the record room, in the clinic, clinic area, all those areas, they can tell the difference.
Okay, and then you, you mentioned also that there is no exhaust vents.
No exhaust vents in the shower.
In the shower?
Right, shower, for the inmate take the shower, there's no exhaust vents there. If there were exhaust vent, should be one when you turn on the switch to light, exhaust vent should come on automatically. But since there's not, so the mold, the marshters were causing the mold to grow. Because it's getting up to, the humidity levels is getting up to sixty percent or higher. Anytime it get up to sixty percent or higher, that's very conducive for mold to start growing. And so that's why you got the mold growth, and most of these ceilings in there are horrible. I'm just going to tell you, they, they, the ceilings are horrible with the mold growth. But now, the slide, the slide that I showed you earlier, as you can see though, the mold is gone and it's good.
How long, when you do something like this, how long does it actual last? With, because you said that we don't have, you know, exhaust vents, like what would be, do you need to come back at a certain time? I know we have conversations right now, probably we'll talk about it sooner, reference to building a new jail. Hopefully sooner, the conversation will come up sooner rather than later. But how long does the, the things that you have done as a remedy to address the mold, how long will this last before?
It comes again, that again, longest you control the humidity level. Longest you control the leaks, it shouldn't come back.
But we can't control the roof leak for the most part?
If it get fixed and stop the leaks, then that will control the water. See, mold need water and it needs a source of food, this dry, the drywall, the dust and so forth is causing the mold to thrive and to grow. And if you get rid of the high humidity, sixty percent, as I said, are high, and stop the water, mold is particularly, is, is not going to grow.
Was, is the heating, the HVAC system a part of the equation as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You know, you want to have a comfortable temperature in there, of course, but you know, the main thing is the water and the high humidity and a source of food for the mold to grow. If you can control those areas, those three items, then you should be able to control mold, it won't grow.
Thank you.
We also do preventive measures also, you know, like we did for the civic center. When we did the civic center, you know, we gave recommendations and they didn't follow. And so as a result of that, we had to go back and, and do the same cleaning again. But after we did it the second time, they followed our direction, and it's been over four or five years ago. Then they never had, don't have any problem anymore because now they got preventive maintenance things we recommend for them to put in place, and they put those things in place, so they ain't had any other problem with mold.
I, I did, I know you had made a comment that we need to address the exhaust vent when we build a new jail.
Yes.
Um, you had a second report, the only thing that we have is this actual presentation. If possible, if we can get whatever documents that you had provided, because you said you had a second?
Yes, I gave, I just submitted one, I just got in from Savannah last, yesterday. But I, I submitted something yesterday evening, and I also revised and then I sent it again this morning at seven o'clock.
Yeah, so that, that'd be good, that way.
You have that, right, it's a summary, I'm sorry, it's a summary of the second floor, south tower, second, third and fourth floors. The things what we saw and the things that we recommended, and also the results of the air quality is on there.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Bonner, you have told us that there are a number of these problems that are not being addressed at this point. My concern is that we are a couple of years out from the new jail. In the meantime, we need exhaust fans, we need the roof fixed, we need all of those other kinds of things. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to make sure that those things happen. Is it Public Works, is it the city, is it the Sheriff's Department Office? Whose responsibility is it to make sure that the, in the two to three years before we get the new jail, this mold doesn't come back? And we don't have this same problem?
City manager staff?
Public Works, building maintenance would be responsible for all buildings in the city.
And so Public Works would be the one to make sure the jail is, is free of mold and that?
That's correct.
Roof is fixed and the exhaust fans are?
Yes.
Fixed, and do we have a plan for them to do that?
Well, currently, what they are doing is when the ceiling tiles get wet, they just go take them off and they replace them. They got an awful lot of ceiling tiles, new ceiling tiles for that. But we telling them, you know, you got to do preventive make, stop the leaks, stop the leaks. But they said a lot of the plumbing leaks are within the walls themselves. So they had to tear the wall open just to get to the pipe in order to fix it.
Well, my concern is that our, our jail typically is almost at capacity. And it will stay that way until we get a new jail, and the new jail will be almost at capacity. And I'm concerned about those inmates and those employees that are going to be subjected to what you have shown us in the, in the next several years. I, I, I don't, I quite frankly, I'm not very optimistic about the fact that it won't.
We invited him to do this, wanted to follow up, was so that counsel would know the issues that we're developing a roadmap to deal with, because the whole reason this was done in the first place, as soon as we found out this stuff existed or could exist, immediately called this gentleman and got to work trying to figure out what it is. So it's going to be taken care of, I mean, that's not an option.
And, and so Mayor, I was just talking to the director about some of the things he's identified that we did not include in the budget, of course. And, and we will, you said you sent an updated report yesterday.
Yes.
And we'll get that report to members of council, but it, you know, I'm going to have the director to, you know, and, and I know funding will be necessary. And so we, we may, as we're in the budget process, present some additional things to you for public work, for public works, for building maintenance.
Well, I know that the Public Works is on our budget committee agenda for this afternoon, so I don't know if we'll hear any of these this afternoon or not.
We may not have it today, but we will come back while we're in the budget process to quickly to, with any additional needs based on what we know.
Well, you've, you've heard my concern, so thank you for taking a look at it, thank you.
If, if I may interject as well, Mr. City Manager?
If if I may interject as well, Mr. City Manager, uh the jail is, in my opinion, a maintenance nightmare. It was designed as a maintenance nightmare.
Maintenance nightmare.
A maintenance nightmare.
And and you can see that obviously from
And it would take, it would take an army, excuse me, to keep it to the condition that it was when it was first built, number one. Number two, you all are, should be familiar with the fact that we've been spending a lot of money on plumbing issues in the jail. Plumbing issues that we frankly can't even reach because it's so, it's it's, the piping is built into the Yeah, the wall is concrete, if you break open the concrete, we can't leave a hole. And then I've gotta have someone small enough that can fit in there to do the repair. So it is a maintenance nightmare that we are constantly working on. Right now, I have one individual, one plumber, that's it. And we've assigned him to the jail and that's all he does all day long. He's chasing leaks all day long. So we do have vacancies, we've been advertising these vacancies for over a year now, if not longer. To help with the maintenance of this facility, but it is from design, a maintenance nightmare.
And when he talks about the ventil- lack of ventilation, I mean, I'm sure it meant cold when it was But of course, it's different today and you don't have it and it's something we'd have to alter the building to. I don't know what we'd have to do to get there, but we need to look at it. I mean, we had the same challenge, obviously with the government center with building cold standards at that time. And uh and so now here we are today.
And MCP is going through the same
But we are going to come back to you, not today, but soon at the next budget meeting, hopefully with some numbers that of things that we need to do with the jail. To to get us through when we decide or construct or renovate or combination uh of both as it relates to the jail.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about this, you know, and I don't know if soon is soon enough. We talk about the government center, this to me is is five times more a nightmare. Sir, you uh uh sounds like, well, number one, you're an expert in this and you've been you've been doing this stuff for a long time, messing with this crud for a long time, I'm sure, based on what I'm hearing. Um, when when was the last time you were in the building?
Uh, last week. But my technicians are there, those days I mentioned, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they're there now.
Staying there on a regular basis?
Right, yes.
Okay, um How long does it take when some of that stuff you just showed us? How long does it take to get in that condition?
Twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
That chart, those charts you showed us, it could happen that fast?
That that quick, right, if the humidity is sixty percent or higher and you got water present.
Some of the stuff you witnessed, how long you think that's been going on?
Oh, since the jail been built, since they said they never uh cleaned the vents. They said only clean it one time, they said.
Well, it seems to me, I went back over there the other day and checked on things and look, it's uh a night and day difference, so you've been doing one heck of a job. I won't commend you on that, but uh I think your hands are full too, because you can see where you're making progress already, it's starting all over again in some places. And with the leaks and things like that, a lot of that stuff is just temporary, it's just a matter of time when it just starts again. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes, if it's, right. Now, here's another thing we do, once we get through cleaning everything, we actually fog that unit out. Let's say we in the jail cell or the dorm, you know, we actually are fogging it out with an antimicrobial that has a residual killing action for up to six months. That meaning that any mold spurs laying on this surface, where that foggy material had come in contact, it will not grow. And it kill the mold that is flying around in the air as well as what's on the surfaces.
I saw that, I said, like I said, you did a good job. I did see where it's starting to try to come back again and resurface. I'm sure you'll hit those places. It's obvious to me that we need to continue this program routinely to make sure that it's remediated and it stays like that. I do know, I I toured some places, the old areas that uh where there's fowls and things, uh there are, there is a lot traffic and all in there, I think, uh from the rodents and things like that. I mean, there's a lot of areas that need to be cleaned up with the flaking of the paint and things like that. I'm sure you're gonna get into those areas, right?
Now, one area we haven't been to is the stockade. You know, the security personnel is telling us, they say it's a nightmare over there as well, in terms of mold growth. We hadn't even been over there yet.
They might be understating that a little bit. But um, Mr. City Manager, I think it's it's obvious, uh we've got to get the funds to stay on top of this in the budget as soon as possible and continue the uh the remediation like he's talking about, cause I just personally, I I it you know, as soon as you fix one area, I mean, this has been going on for a while, as soon as you fix one area, there's another area that's starts and then you come back and you have to deal with the same area you just dealt with and it's just a, we can't take a temporary approach to this, we gotta take an ongoing approach to it, so we do need to make sure that the funds are in the budget. And even if we deal with that today, I don't know what that amount is, but those are things that uh I I I just don't see us putting those to the side and dealing with it at a later point. Like I said, soon is not soon enough, so um I just thank you for coming and, you know, I learned some things by your presentation and appreciate that and and I'm glad that you're still there and you'll be working on it. And like I said, again, you've, it was different night and day from first time I saw it to where it is now, so uh you've you've done a good job, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Mayor, um I I join the counselor and I I'm impressed with your credentials and and your work and uh and of course the results uh in photos. Uh Mayor, I know the sheriff is in the back, I don't know if he want to make any comments.
Yeah, while he's coming up, we've got Counselor Tucker that has been waiting, Counselor?
Um, yes, one of the things that I had requested was um a actual estimate of how much we have spent with um Benjamin Franklin um as it regards, not only to the jail, but even parts and wreck, because um one of the things that we have heard is um pay for individuals like um plumbers who can make seventy-five, hundred fifty dollars a hour just going to a actual property. So seeing how much we're spending on um the Benjamin Franklin coming to um, I guess, the jail and also they're there almost every day. Um I know in the summertime here at the Aquatic Center and you're saying that one individual is at, you know, the jail focusing on all those issues that we have at the jail regarding the water. I wanted to see, and the reason why I wanted to see it during, when I had asked early April, was to see if it was a way for us to possibly pay our plumbers more because one of the things that we have always had is that on the critical vacancy list. So when we pay our plumbers more, um just like veterinarians and everything else, we can actually attract um the individuals that we need, because I I think that we're spending more by just contract than Benjamin Franklin, than being able to pay our actual city employee who is there all day um more money and then feel those other um positions that you have a hard time feeling. So um I think it and Mayor, I don't know if it's it's too late to do this, cause I know you got your proposed budget already. But that, getting that information, um that's the reason why I had asked for it at the beginning of April. That way we could possibly, you know, discuss with um doing a a higher uh salary for our plumbers.
We've actually had that conversation as recently as this past week.
And and so Mayor, we, in our pay scale, um when we advertise for plumbers and electricians, you know, under my authority as city manager, I can move them out on the scale and pay them more. And we've done that and we will continue to do that and and that has been requested by the director and I've done that. Um the one thing we can't obviously do is move them out on the scale where their pay exceeds management and the people who supervise them, so we we go as far as we can go. And so we're we're gonna continue to do that to try and get plumbers and electricians in the door. Um and so I've worked with you on that.
He has and the the challenge is that plumbers are in demand. And you've got private companies that don't have those financial caps and they're offering them even more money than we can even afford to pay them. So it's a, it's a um vicious cycle of bringing someone on that's a plumber, they've been with another company for ten years, we offer them what we can and then within a month later, they got another offer for a different company to go work for them. So it is just a hamster wheel that we're on with these plumbers, but we are trying to attract the older plumber who can't do um uh what the younger plumbers do as far as physical labor that want the benefits but need the salary as well. So those are the ones that we're trying to attract. But the younger ones aren't staying with us for long. So Columbus Tech does not have a plumbing program, if you will. They have what they consider home maintenance. So it's it's limited to what the skill set that we need. Um but what, I've spoken with um people in the Sheriff's Department, I've spoken with uh JTPA because we've got some summer youth employees coming in, I'm looking for maybe someone older who wants to start a career and are interested in maintenance. Also looking at maybe there's some um nonviolent offenders that could work with the person that's in the jail and possibly when they get ready to come out, short timers, they could possibly be hired and work in the jail um as an apprentice with that individual. So we're brainstorming, trying to figure out new ways of bringing people on and bringing them on from the inside if necessary.
Yeah, and and we may have to consider, cause like I said, you can only move them up so far that they don't exceed what the upper management people are making, cause that's our pay scale. And so one thought might be that, I mean, we could do some kind of um supplement or stipend over a period of time to make sure that we keep them, let's say, three years, we don't give it all to you at once. But if you, you know, in increments, I mean, I don't know, I'm just talking out loud here, but you know, we gotta look at at some options. So and and we we'll do that.
Sheriff?
Well, thank you. Good morning, uh Mayor, Counsel, City Manager, City Attorney. I've heard the level of frustration from some of the counselors and I had a conversation, uh Counselor Thomas concerning the jail and everything that you said, I said the exact same thing. Uh you may hear some people come up and um speak and they can verify that your concerns are are my concerns. I worry about the safety and the well-being of the staff that has to work in this environment every single day. As Sheriff, uh it's my responsibility to care for the for the uh inmates their well-being, but we're moving in the direction. I wish that the, that we could move faster, that was one of my concerns um yesterday and about the new jail project, but I do wanna thank Public Works and I do wanna thank Drill Short and her staff, City Manager, uh for us um initially speaking about these issues early on and uh Counselor Tucker, thank you. That's one of the issues that we have. We don't have full-time maintenance people in inside of the jail constantly. As long as I've been associated with the Sheriff's Office and it goes back to the early two thousand, we always had a full-time uh maintenance person in the jail. We don't have that anymore. And so uh the plumbing issues that we have in the jail goes back beyond fifteen, twenty years and uh and as was mentioned earlier, until we can stop the leaks in the jail, the plumbing issues in the jail, we're gonna have mold issues. My phone rings off the hook quite often um about the well-being of their, of the, of the family members that are housed in the county jail, but but thank you for listening and I think that this was a eye-opener, not just to the council, but it should be an eye-opener um to the citizens of Muskogee County, but this is something that we've been dealing with, that I've been dealing with, I I know for the past three years, um so it's a dangerous environment in itself physically. But uh but I'm really worried about the well-being um in the safety of our staff and and those that are housing the Muskogee County Jail, so thank you for your time.
Mayor, if there are no other questions, that concludes my agenda today.
All right, uh Counselor, wait a minute, Counselor Kogle?
Uh it's not to, it's not to any of the presentations, um but uh last uh council meeting, I asked for um two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be taken out of the Uptown TAD and um allocated for the splash pad at um Woodruff Park and after some discussion with with um Ed Wolverton and it just seems that the TAD application that we have presented to him is fairly complicated and and so I'd like to see if we can just go ahead, since this is kind of a time-sensitive thing and we're trying to get this done before summer, I was down there this weekend, um and the splash pad and that playground were packed. That uh we move that funding from the TAD to either um and your choice either from either the Friends of Columbus, if there's enough funding in there or just the fund balance, just to get that project moving. And Ed can go ahead and once we can get that that funding over, then um we'll let, leave it up to Uptown on what the timeline of their project is, so if I can make a motion just to do that, that'd be great.
One thing I would suggest is, if you've communicated with the folks at Friends of Columbus, cause they have we kinda, there's a protocol.
I mean, either, I mean, or or out of the, out of the fund balance is fine.
So uh Mayor, and she can make a motion inappropriate funding source, whether it's Friends or Reserve or other sources and and then we'll work with that.
So that is your motion, right? Motion and a second, uh any further discussion? All in favor say aye, but any opposed? All right, um Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with the the waiving of the business license that we did in twenty-three. I wanted to ask the City Manager if they could report uh back to us at some point. We waived
I missed, I'm sorry, I missed your first motion.
I'm sorry, I understand. Uh this is regarding uh the business license waiver that the council passed last year in twenty-three. Uh some businesses paid their their license and then and and the fee and the penalties and interest and all that, and then we waived it. So when will they get a refund?
I I don't think we waived it, I in in a sense of waiver, I think it was like postponed. We'll get the finance director, but you know, we didn't waive, you didn't waive any a- as I understand it.
Okay, well, I I think we did it the last quarter, but anyway, if you could just talk to them and find out uh what what we're gonna do with that and get back to us, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, um but
I think the understanding from the business community was they paid it in good faith and then we waived it.
Yeah, I don't You want to address that, finance director? Yeah, I don't, you want to address that, Finance Director? Um, I don't.
That's what I thought they said.
So when, when they, um, last year, the word waiver was used, but it wasn't that the penalty or whatever, how'd you understand that and what are you doing?
Um, the penalties and interest were, well, the interest was waived, um, from November 1st through December 31st.
So, so interest in terms of if you were late and we typically would charge you interest, the interest would be waived, but not?
Interest, well, and what you had accumulated up to that point was still due.
Yeah.
Yes. So all the penalties and interest.
So your business license fees were not waived, it was just the interest?
It was just the interest.
Yeah.
For that period. For that period, for those two months. So basically 3%.
Were there, were there some that have already, had already paid the interest and before the forgiveness period?
Well, everything that was due and payable up to October 31st was still due and payable. The interest was, was waived for November and December, so you didn't accrue additional interest for those two months. But what was due and payable up through the end of October was still payable.
I think there's some confusion in the community because there was mentioned of refunds or a credit or something going forward. So we, we need, we need to.
Let us bring back a present, a presentation that explains in a PowerPoint, you know, how she's applied it, okay?
That would be great.
And that way you'll get to, to have it, a hard copy of it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Counsel, Counselor Davis?
I know we're going to get into budget session. One of the things, um, I want to highlight again is the, uh, compliance update. We, we really need that. April 1st is gone and before we start making major changes, uh, I think that's appropriate. The, along with that, um, April 1st, uh, I still see a lot of license out in the community in 2023 and that deadline has passed. And I don't know where we're at on that, but I think that it would probably be a wise thing, um, and I can make that recommendation here, is to go ahead and send out another notice, courtesy notice about people that they haven't paid and they don't have their license and they need to go ahead and do that because we're in, going into June almost and these licenses have expired still. And I, I, you know, I don't know if it's the responsibility of the business owner or they're just not getting the messages or what. And some of these, uh, businesses, my understanding is being held, i- it's being taken care of corporate and even in a, another state and dealing with this stuff, but everybody needs to get on the same page with that. So, uh, I'm just saying, probably the best way to handle that is to get another courtesy notice out and remind everybody again. So I think the, we all talked about 2024, it's getting back on track with, uh, with our collections.
Right, and we are on track. Actually, we are, um, projecting that we will have the, uh, Lot Box, which is our mail-in returns. Um, the goal is to have that processed by the end of June. And so once we get, go through all of the Lot Box, some of the businesses that you could possibly see, they mailed the payment and the return to us and they are pending in queue. So we, our plan is to have the queue cleared out by the end of June and at that point we'll send out the courtesy notices.
And so, Ms., if you're done with that, I was just going, Ms. Mayor, you, we could go back to the $250,000. I, I, if, if the sponsor of, of that motion could, or someone could amend it to allow that to be a grant, uh, of $250,000, uh, and not just money out of reserve. I mean, it, it, we'll find the source, but a grant because they are not a city department entity, it's a nonprofit. And so if it was a grant.
Yeah, I mean, I can amend that.
Sure.
Okay. There's a motion to amend, there's a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's amended.
Thank you.
All right, um, that's all for the City Manager. Madam Clerk? There we go. Wait, we've got one more, Counsel. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution 1 and 2. And then on Item 3, to remove Mr. Daniel Street from that recommendation, I have spoken with him and he had some family emergencies, but he's on track and I have spoken with, uh, Clerk of Council about that.
So Resolution 1 and 2 to be approved?
Yes.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, those two have been done.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did want to go over those dates that are listed in both of those resolutions. For the first resolution, um, changing the meeting schedule for the month of June, the council just approved June 4th, 2024 at 5:30 PM, June 11th at 9 o'clock AM, June 18th at 9 o'clock AM, and the June 25th meeting would be canceled. And we will have these dates listed on the city's main website.
All right.
Also, the second.
Can't wait, just a second, Counselor Thomas.
Um, Madam Clerk, on those, uh, dates that you have mentioned, and I don't know if it's you or if it's, um, maybe somebody from the Finance Department, um, some of those are supposed to be, we're supposed to have citizens' meetings on those dates. Can you tell us which ones those are?
Are you referring to Counselor Thomas, the Taxpayers Bill of Rights?
Yes.
Public hearing?
Yes.
I do not have those dates, um, with me at this time.
If we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move some dates, we need to make sure that, um, the citizens know when the Citizens Bill of, Taxpayers Bill of Rights meetings are and at what time they are, uh, and where they will be. So perhaps Ms. Alexander can help us with that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So the first Taxpayer Bill of Rights will be June 4th, um, at 9 AM in the council chambers. Uh, the second Taxpayer Bill of Rights hearing will be June 4th at 6 PM as part of the regular council meeting. And the third Taxpayer Bill of Rights hearing will be June 11th at 9 AM as part of the regular council meeting.
So there will be a taxpayer, two Taxpayer Bill of Rights meetings on the 4th?
Yes, ma'am.
One at 9 AM and one at?
6 PM.
6 PM as part of our meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Uh, and then, Mr. Mayor, for that second resolution, uh, changing the venue, we're gonna have May 21st. This would be the Budget Review Committee Meeting. This is going to be held at the Muskogee County School Board Chambers, the Public Education Center, uh, that's located at 2960 Macon Road. Uh, we're also gonna be having two council meetings held at the Muskogee County School Board Chambers and that's gonna be July 23rd and that's a 5:30 PM meeting. And July 30th is a work session that's gonna be held at 9 o'clock AM. And once again, we will be, uh, publishing those dates, uh, time and the change in venue on the city's website. Uh, and then, Mr. Mayor, um, Item Number 3, that Counselor Crabbe had made reference to, um, asking for your approval to declare the seat of Ms. Sandra Ellison, uh, from the Public Safety Advisory Commission to be declared vacant and removing, uh, Mr. Daniel Street.
All right, there's a motion and is there a second? Okay, motion second to.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I meant the second.
No, to remain on the list, well, to be removed from the correspondence to remain on the, on the committee.
That is correct.
Was there for a time-specific?
Pardon?
Just to keep him on there permanently or?
Yeah, they were trying to remove him because he had, um, he had lack of, for lack of attendance. But I've spoken with him and he had several deaths in the family and he had to go to California to help with that and so he's back on track now.
Okay, yeah, typically they'll, if they're excused, they don't, they won't rack up like that.
I think that there was a lack of communication between the chair and, uh, Mr. Street.
Okay.
So I asked the clerk to get them to contract.
All right, there's a motion to remove Mr. Street from the, uh, correspondence from Dr. Taylor, the chairperson, recommending his seat be vacant.
And to, uh, approve the, uh, declaring the seat of Sandra Ellison as vacant.
Right. All right, there's a motion second. All in favor say aye?
I'm sorry, who made the second, Mr. Mayor?
Uh.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right.
Item Number 4 is, uh, email correspondence from Attorney Jack Sly. He's the Board Secretary for the Hospital Authority of Columbus. Uh, the authority has selected Mr. Darrell Tony Floyd to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Cynthia Williams Jordan. Uh, the council may confirm this selection.
Motion second to confirm, Mr. Floyd. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Uh, he's confirmed.
Item Number 5 is an email correspondence also from Attorney Sly, uh, Board Secretary to the Hospital Authority. Uh, he's forwarding the resignation of Ms. Betty Tatum, uh, should be received.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion second to receive with regrets. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion second to receive the minutes. All in favor say aye? Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments. Any, um, nominees may be confirmed for this meeting. For the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Crystal Shaheed. This is the business community and I have been advised, uh, Mr. Mayor, that she is not interested in reappointment.
I'll get you another name.
Thank you. For the Youth Advisory Council, the mayor is nominating Kona Kogle and she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor say aye? All right, she is confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. For the Youth Advisory Council, I have outlined all of the district seats. Uh, Mayor Protem for District 6 is nominating Lauren Robinson and she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, Ms. Robinson's confirmed.
For District 7, Counselor Kogle is nominating Kale, Kale Ladini.
Motion second to confirm, Ms. Ladini. All in favor say aye? Any opposed?
And for District 10, Counselor Begley is nominating Bryce Knight and he may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm, Ms. Knight. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Were there any other nominees? Thank you. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the Board of Family and Children's Services, the seat of Jennifer Melvin. She is eligible to serve another term. Uh, we are working to determine, uh, if she falls into one of the five categories that are left with regards to this particular board, uh, but if a member of council wanted to go ahead and make that nomination, then we'll work on that for the next meeting. Okay, Counselor Tucker has made that renomination. Next, the Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have the seat of Timothy.
Tim Crabbe does not want to, um, serve again.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Crabbe. Uh, yes, uh, Timothy Crabbe does not desire reappointment. And then we have Jensen Melton is eligible to serve another term. Uh, we have not been able to make contact to determine if, uh, he is interested in continuing to serve. We also have Donald Wayne Hoffman. He is interested in serving another term if a member of council wanted to make that nomination.
I'll make the nomination.
Counselor Crabbe has made that nomination. We have the seat of Richard Leary. This is the Columbus Hurricane Representative. He does not desire reappointment. And we also have the seat of Janet Buzzey. Uh, she's not eligible to serve another term as well as Bruce Samuel, Samuels. Uh, he should have been listed as not eligible to serve another term. And so these seats are open for nominations. For the Columbus Golf Course Authority, the seat of Richard Mahone, he is eligible to serve another term, uh, as well as James Houston Jr. For the seat of Richard Wright, he is not eligible to serve another term and Counselor Crabbe is nominating Stephanie Lenore for the seat, I'm sorry.
Let's pronounce Lair.
Lair, thank you so much, uh, for the seat of Richard Wright.
Mayor, Mayor Protem? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate, uh, Karen Stewart, since, since there are no women on this board currently. Uh, I think you remember, we nominated her last time and, uh, she was not selected, but we talked about renominating her for this, this vacancy this year. So, thank you, Mayor.
So we have two, two women nominated for the same seat, Richard Wright's seat?
Pierce, Pierce, so. Counselor Davis?
You're up.
He left? All right, we'll come back to him later.
Okay. Okay, we will bring those two nominees back for vote tabulation at the next meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have the seat of David Hauser, Pamela Green Thomas, both are eligible to serve another term. Uh, we have not been able to make contact to determine if they are interested in serving. We also have the seat of Tracy Walton King. She's not eligible to serve another term. The seat of Eddie Florence, he has resigned and we also have a vacant seat. All are open for, uh, nominations. For the Region 6 Regional Advisory Council, for Department of Behavioral Health and Development and Disabilities, the seat of Mary Ann Young and Christopher Smith, uh, both are eligible to serve another term if a member of council wanted to make those, make that nomination. Okay, Mayor Protem Allen has made that nomination and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we've got, uh, requests to go into executive session to discuss litigation and real estate acquisition and disposal. Potential litigation. All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion second. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we have been in executive session. We discussed, uh, potential litigation as well as, uh, land, uh, disposal and acquisition. No votes were taken. Turn it over to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Call up the resolution to settle all the claims of Cheryl Flowers from an accident occurring December 11, 2020 for $195,000.
Motion and second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? All right, well, that is approved. I need to go to the Clerk of Council, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to, uh, present an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Huff from today's meeting.
Motion second on a resolution to excuse Counselor Huff. Uh, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All right, and we are going to take about a, uh, about a 25-minute break. Uh, we reconvene at 2:20, uh, for the budget deliberations. Uh, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, there's a motion second to adjourn. All in favor say aye? All right, we are adjourned.